And they have had the wrong email. Was it, is it still woodworking?
Well, it is, but the key link one is better.
Okay, I'll forward it to you right now.
Okay.
I've got, I've got it too, so I can help with that. What is it, Marco?
Yeah, well, and Marco. Marco, I had a bounce back, I think, from Imagine Glenwood. If you, if you think about it and you want to be contacted, text me your email.
M D at keylink vr dot com.
All I needed was the M D.
Yep.
Keylink, V, keylink B or VR?
VR. In vacation rentals.
Is this where you do the promo?
That's right. That, now we're doing the dance and then it's all good.
Six o'clock.
Fuck, so who else are we, who else are we missing here? Ben's here.
Marco, I think we're missing Carolyn and George Shaver. Oh, there you are, George, sorry.
Um, Pete's not here.
Right, Pete and Carolyn, yep.
Okay, let's give it a couple more minutes.
Okay, sorry.
I'd like to, yeah. See if we can. And that must be Trent's email.
It looks like Pete and Carolyn were in the attendees list, so.
Yeah, I'm here.
I P.
Hey.
That's seven, Marco.
Sorry.
Or, I said that's seven, I think we are good.
I, I think I'm gonna wait for a video from Carolyn if I could.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Just so I know she's connected. And then I think we're gonna start. There she is. All right. Okay, let's see. Excellent. So is everybody ready? We get to go? All right, excellent. So let's see, the time being, what is it, six oh two on this March twenty third, two thousand twenty one, I call to order the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This is our regular meeting for March, and we are still on Zoom. And the, let's see, webinar ID for tonight is eight seven eight two zero nine eight zero five five nine. If you want to join via Zoom, or you can call in with the following phone number, one six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. We need, and would, I saw, who's doing it? Gretchen, are you running them? Oh, there's Jen. I didn't see you. Hi Jen, could you please take a roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Dem.
Here.
Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner White. Commissioner Schacter.
Here, and if I may, for the, Mr. Chairman, for the record, attest that I did observe the entire prior February P and Z meeting, watch and listen to it, so I'm, I believe I'm eligible and prepared to sit for any items that were continued.
Excellent, thank you for letting us know.
Commissioner Whissing.
I am here, and I did the same thing as Sumner. I'm, I watched everything and ready to go also.
Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner West.
Here.
And Commissioner Waller.
I'm here, and I also watched the video from last meeting as well.
Great, thank you for letting us know. Welcome, everybody. Um, let's see, item three on the agenda for tonight is receipt of the minutes from February twenty third, two thousand twenty one.
Marco, if I may, could you seat Commissioner Waller?
Absolutely. Um, let's see, I'm entertaining a motion to seat alternate Commissioner Waller for tonight's meeting.
Go move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Jen, would you please call for the question?
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Whissing?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you Jen for reminding me. And moving on to receipt of the minutes from the February twenty third meeting, I'm entertaining a motion to receive those minutes.
Go move. Again.
And a second, any discussion on the minutes? No, we'll see now. Commissioner Sipperly, please.
I did actually notice on the second paragraph on the second page of those minutes, uh, it's a short one, it reads Rice Hill indicated that the commission approved the application. I think that that means that staff recommended approval of the application with the findings and conditions.
Good catch.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? No, then I'll call for the question. To receive the minutes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dem?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Whissing? Commissioner West?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You, thank you Jen. Hey Jen, could you make me a co-host so I can lower hands? Okay, fuckin' troll freak in me. Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, item four on the agenda tonight is comments from citizens appearing in front of us for items that are not on the agenda. If you're here to talk about anything else, please raise your hand. And as always, I see none, thank you. And we're gonna move into our first continued item for tonight. We're gonna have a large agenda tonight, so I'm hoping we can do these items here very expedient and efficient to get through all this. So our first continued item for tonight is Planning File forty dash twenty, special use permit to operate a large childcare center, and I don't even have to go in there because they withdrew, from what I understand. So I don't think there's any more actions on our end to be taken. I'm sad to see them fall off the, off the map, but it is what it is. So we're moving into second continued item for tonight, which is Agenda Item five B, Planning File sixty nine dash twenty, consideration of a special use permit for retail marijuana establishment at twenty one fourteen Grand Avenue.
Evening, planning and zoning commissioners. Trent Hyatt with the Community Development Department here, and I'll start by asking the chair to promote at least Chris Hawkins and John Diet, who are the applicants for this project. Should be somewhere in the, in the long list that we have there. But a, as you know, this item was continued from last month's meeting to potentially receive additional public comment due to the format that we're going with now with virtual meetings. I indicated in the staff report that you, that we had not received any additional public comment, but we, but we actually have sent, I sent you an email with some of those. We received three letters of support of the, in, in support of the application, one from the adjacent property owner to the south. Also, last month's meeting, you did request that the applicant take a look at some additional building treatments along the north and south elevations of the building, just to try to connect the existing building with the improvements that are proposed on the front facade to improve that aesthetic from, from other views. You also asked that you receive an updated marijuana map that includes the, the new buffers adopted by the city. Those items were included in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Excellent, thank you Trent. I got Chris here, but I don't see John. So John, if you're one of the five phone numbers that I have on the attendees list, could you please raise your hand? Which is, what is it, star nine? What is it, Jen?
I think it's star nine.
Star nine to raise your hand. Um, I don't see his name, and maybe he's not here tonight.
Is, hi, this is Chris Hawkins. His mobile number ends in seven, seven, three, five, four, six, three.
Five, four, yeah, I don't, I don't see that number, no.
Okay.
This, unless, yeah, if you want to add some.
Yeah, just really quickly, um, just in rebuttal to the one, uh, public comment we had. There was a comment that this isn't compatible, and I provided lots of examples of other shops that have been approved by the city in very similar context. The one shop I didn't mention was the one that we had approved over on Wolfson Road, which is right across the street from a hotel, right in the middle of the major regional shopping center. That's just one more example. Odor will not be an issue. And given the limited public comment with the large number of letters that were sent out, I know you can't really count that, but I was really quite pleased at the very limited number of negative comments we had, so thank you for your time. I know you have a long meeting and look forward to hearing your deliberations.
You, thank you, Chris. Back to the commission, any additional questions to staff or the applicant?
Marco, yeah, I, I had a question, was on the, um, I think, I don't know, this might have been Georgia Carolyn from the last meeting, but were, were, were they gonna do an updated site plan with the, with the pork chop? I'll call it the pork chop, the, the right in, right out, and the impact for parking. It sounds like, from what Jessica said, they were gonna be able to maybe do it on using the sidewalk and have some raised curb and that sort of thing, but I was just wondering, is that, it, was that something that was gonna be done?
Pete, that is still anticipated. Um, we've had some discussions after the fact about that to clarify exactly what was requested from staff. I think there was a little bit of confusion during the actual meeting. But we don't anticipate that there's gonna be any, any issues or negative impacts to the parking and the circulation at the site with the addition of that pork chop. Now, we haven't done any additional detailed engineering for that, because you know, that's something that an applicant would want to make sure that, that we had an approval for before moving forward with those details, but we don't anticipate it being a problem.
Yeah, I remember there is a bit of concern of what was C dot's requirement versus the City Glenwood's, and so I guess that's part of that whole conversation, right?
Yeah, correct. I mean, C dot, I don't think has any opposition to us restricting that access there, and it's more actually in line with the future access control plan in terms of controlling access between the two lots at the site.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sipperly, please.
Thanks. Trent, with the new, um, map that you sent out with the distances from schools and things, I don't know, is this application basically a revised one from the one we received last year, which is why the, the proposed shop is in a thousand foot buffer?
Yeah, i- if you remember, we actually received this revised app, application, and City Council authorized that before the effective date in December of the, the new buffer requirements, and therefore this application came before those new regulations.
Thanks, I thought that's what I remembered.
Shaver, please.
Yeah, I'm, um, I'm a little concerned about the combined access permit. I don't, um, in the future with Stinker. I'm wondering if the applicant has made any commitment to honoring that at whichever time that might come down the pipe, so to speak.
George, do you mean the adjacent property owner? Are they committed to it? Because we're recommending it as a condition that they at least provide us with an easement along their property boundary so that we could facilitate it in the future.
And the property owner has agreed to that condition as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Schacter, please.
For me? Um, thank you. Trent, a couple things. On, again, piggybacking on Pete's question, on the right in and right out, which seemed to be some confusing, we know, we don't know the final configuration, but is there any, is there any way legally to regulate or to actually stop left turns in from southbound traffic, and is there any ordinance that prohibits it?
Well, I think it would be, at a minimum, an unsafe traffic movement that could, you know, be cited, you know, they, someone could be cited for. Is it going to still happen? I imagine so, because there's not gonna be any limitation or restriction in the actual middle turn lane of the highway. So it's likely to still occur, but you know, I, I think that it would be a dangerous movement for folks to try it.
No, that doesn't seem to stop Grand Avenue traffic, but that's my question. There is no enforceable or physical way to stop a left turn in.
Well, let me qualify that. There's no, from the City of Glenwood Springs perspective, there's no physical or enforceable way to do it, because it is, in fact, C dot right away, so you know, putting a, uh, you know, some kind of a physical barrier to stop the left-hand movement is outside the scope of what we have the authority to require or make happen.
Okay. And Trent, a second question, and it's a repeat, but would you clarify again for me and for the record, why, was it council that said this can be revised and therefore be heard within the one-year period? Was that a council directive?
Correct. The request was made and directed to City Council, and they made the determination that the applicant had proposed substantial and material changes to the application and voted to allow the re-submital of the, of the app.
Thank you. And if approved, this would be the twelfth approval for marijuana retail, is that correct, according to your map?
Correct.
Okay. And one last question. Is there any indication as far as, um, the adjoining residence, that's still there? I know that came up before, is that correct? And is it, has there any, been any mentioned by the applicant as to whether that's employee housing, or is that free market housing?
I think Chris had mentioned last time that, you know, they had some interior building improvements to try to further separate those, especially from, from odors that may emit from, from one unit to the next. But I don't think that they anticipated restricting it to employee-only housing for that business.
Yeah. If I could just comment, store employees will take those apartments if the current tenants move out, but there's no desire to push them out, and they're perfectly happy with the store.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, one, one other question was on the HVAC, and it sounds like the applicant's really done a great job of trying to overkill the, the odor issue, but so, so my question though is, i- is the HVAC system combined between, you know, it's, it's all one building with the residential units behind, or are, are they two separate units between the residence and the office stuff to the front?
They're, front is separate from the back, correct.
So two separate units, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, excellent, good information. Um, I'm not gonna reopen the public portion of this hearing since we, or you public had ten days to submit your comments if there were additional comments since the last meeting, so if there's no more questions, then I will bring it back to the commission. Uh, and I'm entertaining a motion and planning file sixty nine dash twenty, consideration of a special use permit for retail marijuana establishment.
I'll make a motion to approve Planning File sixty nine twenty, consideration of a special use permit with the findings and conditions on page one and two of the revised March twenty third, two thousand twenty one suggested motions document.
I'll second that.
All right, excellent. We have a motion and a second, and I, I think you get the pages and the findings and the conditions, everything correct, so I need discussion. Nothing? Okay, well, then I'll go. Um, I appreciate what they've done with the rework in this application. I, I, I really like the change to the building. Um, I think it's a, it's, it, that's, that's the best part, to be honest with you. And I, I would look forward to that, but I, I, I do however struggle with the, the same fact that we had last time, or, or still remaining, and that is that there's a residential unit in the same building. I, for me, that's just me, I don't think that is the correct use for any building that has residential in it, or you, you mix that with residential. So on, on my end, I cannot support the special use permit. Again, I guess I could go the, the better looking building for the residential unit in the back. So anyway, that's how I feel about this, and, and I assume that the, the commission, you know, you, you guys will go in a certain direction, which is fine. I just wanted to point that out. So if there's no more discussion, then I will call for the question.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Whissing?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
I, I wasn't present for this item last time.
Okay. Commissioner Waller?
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dem? Marco, did you vote?
I did. Oh, you didn't hear me? Yes, I said no.
Motion passes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, thank you Jen.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Applicants, good luck with the project. And we are moving into the municipal code title amendment. So let's see, Planning File sixty six twenty, which is our third continued hearing, five C on the agenda. Some municipal code text zero seven zero amendments, and I think that's Gretchen, right?
It is, yes, and if you bear with me for a moment, I'm gonna share my screen. One of these screens. Okay, are you able to see the Excel? Okay, thank you. Um, so the commission discussed these recommended code amendments at your December meeting, um, and then the item was continued in January and February without discussion. So if you recall, way back in December, you had specific questions about outdoor storage, signs within the residential transitional zoning district, solar panel regulations, and the minimum square footage requirements for, excuse me, location and extent reviews. Then after the December meeting, I did add two other code amendments for your consideration. The first one was simply just a technical correction to some marijuana regulations that were put forth, and so it was just correcting that, a, a code reference. And then secondly, I'm having you consider an amendment to the sign code regarding wall signs on buildings in the downtown core. So jumping in here, we're gonna talk real quickly about the outdoor storage regulations, and based on your comments and direction from the December meeting, we've deleted the maximum container size requirements, which are down here. Uh, if you recall, I, I had set a maximum, um, and now, uh, instead of that, we're, we're just using a maximum square footage coverage, so they can have any number of containers within that, that square footage. Um, and then we've added, at your request, some screening requirements to adjacent lodging uses. We've required landscaping with, with the fencing. And then we've clarified that the can, containers cannot be stacked. Now, we didn't talk about that at the last meeting, but it occurred to me that frequently you'll see these storage containers being stacked, and that kind of flies in the face of our screening requirements. Next, regarding solar, this was a rather complicated discussion, so please bear with me for a moment. The commissioner, you all had several comments regarding the addition of small and large-scale solar regulations, so we've clarified that when existing buildings here, they exceed the maximum height, so they, the building in, in itself exceeds the maximum height. Solar panels can be installed on the roof and exceed the maximum building height by five feet. But the panels, as was suggested, cannot actually extend above the roof peak or impact solar access to neighboring properties. Next, we clarified that the screening requirements for large-scale solar systems apply to the ground-mounted equipment. We had neglected to clarify that in the previous iteration of these changes. Then procedurally, here, you'll see that roof-mounted solar systems can be a permitted use in all zoning districts right here. Uh, while the ground-mounted large-scale solar remains a special review use as proposed, and then we added the special review here in the, the hillside preservation district. We've added criterion that all large-scale solar energy systems comply with the electric department procedures right here. And this has to do with the execution of an interconnection or purchase agreement. Next, in the definition section, which, have I added that here? Yes, I did. Some of you commented that the maximum ten KW cap for small-scale solar installations seems to be limiting. Since the December meeting, I had a discussion with our electric department superintendent, and he clarified that the ten KW is actually set by state rules. You can install panels that produce more than the ten KW, but you enter into a non-net meter agreement with the city, and that's, that's actually, so I don't actually need to, to make any changes to the definition section, because that's already addressed. Uh, next, signs in res, in the residential transitional or RT zoning district. The sign code allows just ten square feet of signage in the RT zoning district, which has proved to be problematic for a wide range of commercial uses that are allowed in this district. And I, last time I provided you an example of the hospital. Every time that it wants to add signage, it has to go through a variance procedure, and that seems to be rather onerous. Uh, staff proposed that we exempted commercial uses in the RT zone from this ten square feet of signage requirement. At the December meeting, the commission asked about the potential impact of this recommendation on all of the cities are residential trans- on all of the city's R, uh, residential transitional zones. And my report provided a link to the city zoning map, where you can see where these RT zones are located. And it's roughly in seven areas that I'm not going to read off now, but they're on your screen here. It basically includes like places like the Mountain Market terraces and the Bell Rippe property. So again, I'm proposing that, that we allow commercial uses in the RT zone to have a one square foot of, of signage per lineal foot of building frontage, which is what other commercial uses are, are allowed. Next, we had some questions about the location and the extent review, if you recall. The code currently has no threshold, like we do have for site architectural reviews. So technically, any addition or construction for projects undergoing location and extent review would require a formal review process. And just as a reminder, this would include all public or quasi-public entities. So for example, if Rafta wanted to add a two hundred square foot addition on a, on a building, by our code right now, they would have to go through the formal location and extent review, which, which would be a review before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we suggested an administrative review for projects less than ten thousand square feet. At the December meeting, you all want, suggested, or not you all, but some of you suggested a one thousand square foot threshold, while others suggested five thousand. So right now I'm proposing the higher five thousand square foot threshold. So anything up to five thousand square feet would be an administrative review, and anything over five thousand would be, would go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Lastly, my new additions, I'm not going to belabor this one, this is the technical addition, just some, some wording changes. The next addition was, what I refer to is that addition to the sign code regarding wall sign standards. So currently, the code requires that wall signs in the downtown district, which is the C-two, multi-story buildings, signs need to be located within what's referred to as the traditional sign band area, which is generally between the first and the second floors. The problem here is actually this word generally is in the code. And so that has caught, caused some problems when, when we've applied this, this provision. Since at least two thousand and six, we've required applicants to seek a variance if they want to locate the sign above the second floor. Since then, since two thousand and six, the commission has approved variances, variances for Colorado Mountain College and also the Bank of Colorado. You'll note that other downtown buildings with signs outside of this traditional sign band area include the Bluebird Cafe, Hotel Denver, Glenwood Canyon Brewing, The Springs, and the Tamarack Building. So my question is, should this standard be eliminated? Uh, I believe that my report may have suggested that as an alternative, the building owner could seek a design variance, but that's actually not, not correct. The design standards do not cover deviations from the sign code. So with that all said, I am approving the, I'm approving, I am recommending that you all approve these amendments with findings that are listed in my staff report, and also correction to the pages that, of the amendments that you're approving are pages one through twenty-six of the staff report. So with that, I'm going to close, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you very much, Gretchen. Quick, quick question, though, on the, on the new addition with the elimination, that's something we still have to figure out, right?
The new addition with the, you mean that this, the wall sign standards? Yes, and like I said, you can set this one aside for further discussion if you would like, that, that's fine.
Or we could include it.
Or you could include it.
Okay, excellent. Great, questions to Gretchen, please raise your hand. And I cannot, oh, there you go, Commissioner Shacter.
Gretchen, couple of questions on a couple of items. On number two, and the hillside preservation or the, the steep lots, one per five thousand, one dwelling per five thousand, or five thousand square feet gross floor area. Does that include any possible ADU, or is an ADU allowed on top of that?
An ADU would be allowed, but it would, it would be the, that lot, the, the lot coverage restriction.
Okay, all right.
And that was actually, to clarify, there was some initial question because the, the reason why that provision or that, that amendment is in the code is because there's some disconnect between a chart that's in the code and the actual requirements that are, are addressed later in the code. So that's why that amendment is in there.
Okay, so ADU would not be additional square feet, that's all.
That's my understanding.
Okay, and in item number five on the portable units, I don't know much about portable units technically, but, and I can, I can see why we might not limit, might not want to limit, limit length and width, but what about, I mean, are we missing something by not putting a height restriction on these units? I have no idea what sizes they come on, but it sounds like technically somebody could stack up a, a portable unit vertically that's less than a thousand square feet, and it could be pretty high. So I'm just wondering, are we remiss by not putting a height requirement?
Well, I had suggested the words, they shall not be stacked, but if you want to put a height limit on that rather than shall not be stacked, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, I think they're generally about eight, eight feet high.
Well, my concern, I have no problem with the stack, but I'd still have, I'd still ask the commission or you to consider a height restriction just in case we don't have any weird giant containers that are thousand square feet or less. So maybe, you know, if you think eight is a standard, maybe a ten foot height
Yeah.
might be reasonable.
Um, that's kind of what I was thinking as well. Ten feet, okay.
I did have a comment, I'm not going to fight it too hard, but you know, most of the commission knows how I feel about signs. That there's very little advantage to having signs, and there's a huge detriment visually to our community. That being said, on item, let's see, um, sorry. On, on the, on the residential transition district, I realize there, there aren't a lot of them, and they don't cover a lot of area. But I'm wondering, and I see where somebody could squawk over ten square feet, I wouldn't, but what, I'm more concerned about how big they could be, do you know, for example, using linear feet, how potentially, how big a sign could we end up with in some of these areas, Gretchen, do you know?
Yeah, our code does not set a cap, so it, it is dependent upon the, what's a qualified building frontage. And so in order to qualify as a frontage, you see there, it's got to have some customer entrance or a display window.
Right.
So we do not set, we do not set a, a cap.
My, my concern, and I, I mean, I wouldn't not adopt this, but I'd sure consider some kind of maximum at some point, I don't know what that is, but it, it seems to me that with, with using linear footage, you could have some pretty huge signs, and that concerns me. And my other question is, does this also allow, in the residential transition district, the sign and also window signage as well, or is there a combo of the two?
Right now, our code, we do not regulate signs in windows, except for, they are regulated by the special sign code in the Glenwood Meadows. But other than that, the rest of the city, we do not regulate window signs.
So I could paint my window any way I want and still have a freestanding sign limited only by my legal linear square feet?
Well, so the commercial design standards require some transparency. There's some transparency requirements. And right now, I can't remember what they are off the top of my head, but let's pretend like, say, sixty percent window transparency, which would in, in essence, limit the, I mean, like, you, you couldn't cover your entire window with, with signage because of that transparency requirement that's in another section of the code.
Well, I would just share with the commission my feeling that any sign is too big. And I understand the commercial need and residential need, I've just never seen a correlation between that and business. So I would hope at some point, maybe we consider adding a limit to this provision seventeen. And related to that, Gretchen, if you don't mind, on the second story que, um, item.
Yes.
And this is a technical question. CMC, I didn't even notice it was still up, had their, had the north side of their building almost fully covered with promotional photo signage, was there a request for a permit for that?
They had gone through several levels of city review that is actually, doesn't rise to our definition of signage.
Interesting, okay, I have no more comments at this point, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shacter, hey, I, just quick to piggyback on, on Sumner. Gretchen, did we ever have an issue with a too large of a sign with not having a cap, like Commissioner Shacter mentioned? Do we have a sign that we think that might be too big because of that?
Well.
Standards, by just regular sign standards.
Right, that is a really good question.
So I can't recall, I can't recall.
I don't think so, not, not in my recollection, since I've been working with the city. I had raised it when I first got here as, as a concern, but it has actually never really come into fruition as, as a problem.
Right. Because you, you are limited with what your building will let you put up a lot of times.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, Gretchen, Commissioner Shaver, please.
Thanks, um, you know, I, I had in my notes the same thing, Sumner had mentioned about the height of those containers, and I don't know what their typical dimensions are either, but I think putting a, a height limit and maybe defining it, or relating it to a surrounding area that it sits on might be. You know, I don't know how you define that exactly, but I, I certainly agree with that. You know, I was unclear what, what solar access to adjacent properties mean. Does that mean solar panels can't cast a shadow onto their neighbor?
That's exactly what I, what I intended by that, yes.
So any part, any part of the property, yeah, okay, great. You know, the, under a number ten, where it talks about in excess of twenty percent on the hillside, you know, the, the slope of a, a given building envelope. That seemed confusing to me, it said in excess of twenty percent to twenty-five percent. I wonder if it wouldn't make better sense to say in excess of twenty percent and up to twenty-five percent, and then in excess of twenty-five percent, up to thirty percent.
Sure, yep, no, I can, I can make that clarification.
And, you know, I'm, I'm with Sumner about signs to a certain extent. What my, my thing is, I don't understand why, if you have an event, you know, I can understand putting up a sign forty-five days before, but I don't understand why you need to leave it up for, a temporary sign for forty-five days after the event. And I'm wondering, uh, the banners they put up above Grand Avenue, are there any standards for those? And how long they stay up, is there anything that controls that, or?
Yeah, I apologize, George, I, I didn't focus on the, the changes that you all had reviewed other than the ones that you had flagged for further discussion. So if you could remind me what that, what that is. As far as I know, the Grand Avenue signs, and Jen, you can correct me if I'm completely wrong, but there's a special, that's a special sign that is administered through the electric department, or at least it was in the past.
Are you looking at the sign that goes over the ground? We, we haven't done it since twenty eighteen, I think.
Okay, yeah, I didn't think so.
No longer done, well, I just thought there might, might have been a standard there that related. But, you know, in walking up and down Midland Avenue, short of beer cans and bottles and cigarette butts, campaign signs are what we find, I find the most in the ditches along there, and, you know, it just kind of drives me nuts. So it, I, you know, for myself, I'd rather see a shorter duration for the temporary signs after the event.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, any other questions to staff? From the commission, see none. So Gretchen, just about that, uh, between the first and story, first and second story, the last one, the add-on.
Yes.
Um, I'm just, I, 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 I don't see any harm in eliminating that. That's, that's how I feel about that. If the commission is inclined to include that in tonight's action, I hope we can take an action in this and move this forward to council. I'm one for saying, okay, yeah, we can eliminate it. So if I see no more questions, I guess that wasn't a question, should have been, but it wasn't. I'll bring it back to the commission, and I will entertain a motion in Planning File sixty-six dash twenty.
Mr. Chairman, regarding Planning Item sixty-six twenty, consideration of various code amendments, I would move that we approve the amendments as presented and modified by staff with the suggested, including the suggested verbiage changes by Commissioner Shaver on item number ten, and putting a ten foot height maximum on portable units in item number five.
Excellent, thank you, we have a, we have a motion to approve.
I can second.
And a sec, excellent, open for discussion, any discussion on these items? And I'll just start with, uh, George, what were you thinking about the forty-five days after the event? Did you have another number in mind? If you do, I'd like to hear it.
Well, yeah, I would say fifteen, and that's, that makes a total of sixty days that the sign is up, which is, you know, one-sixth of a year, which seems to be enough in my, in my view.
Sounds good, I can actually get behind that, thank you, George, and Commissioner Whissing, please.
Mine is sort of relating to George's suggestion. Are we talking about things limited to a timeline, like, like say a campaign versus like, like Save Thompson Divide? Those are both temporary signs with two different potential, in this example, two different timelines.
They, as far as, they, they are associated with temporary, is associated with a, like an event. So we can't call them campaign signs anymore. But the Thompson Divide is a personal expression, so those signs can stay up as long as an individual feels like they need to comment about the Thompson Divide issue.
So I was using temporary wrong, I was thinking temporary in structure, and you're thinking tempor- okay, I was, I, that was a, that's clarification, thank you.
Okay, all right.
That's actually a great clarification, because that's exactly what went through my mind, is temporary as in signage, not as in duration, as an event, temporary, but makes sense. So, so an event sign, if the event's over, you get fifteen days to remove it. If it's a personal statement sign such as, as the- If it's a personal statement sign such as as the the don't mind and all that, that can stay up?
Hmm, uh, yes, it can.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, I would amend my motion then, um, if Gretchen's prepared to add Commissioner Shaver's amendment to the duration of event signs, um, that the they be removed fifteen days following the event.
Excellent, thank you, Commissioner Shacter. And I needed amended second as well.
I'm waiting on comment. I can amend my second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wissing. And any more, any more discussion? I'll just throw that, uh, eliminate the uh, between first and second story thing out. I'd like to cover that tonight. Um, so let me know how you guys feel about the the add-on that Gretchen told us about, please.
Was that, wasn't that part of the package already?
It it was for clarification. Yeah, it was included.
Right, but there was a question. Should we eliminate it or not?
Right, I, yeah, I apologize about that.
Because we haven't decided yet, have we?
Well, I I think the motion, um, in, sorry.
Not the motion included it, but.
Right.
Motion included it, um, we didn't discuss it. It didn't come up much in the commission discussions, Mister Chairman.
Okay, alright, I guess I missed that. So out of personal curiosity, are we eliminating it? I'm very confused tonight, so.
Yes, I think that was the motion.
Excellent, thank you, Carl. Commission Zippoli, please.
I can get on board with eliminating that um, first to second story sign rule. Uh, the only other thing that was really of concern uh, was the uh, item nineteen, the location and extents review. But I have to say, since they did such a nice job on that new electric building, um, I think I can be okay with the five thousand square foot limit. I'm just glad that we're having the opportunity to review some of these larger buildings that the city's going ahead with. So I'm okay with everything in this motion.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Shaver.
Uh, you know, relating to that item, Gretchen, uh, the ones that we've reviewed recently that I can think of were you know, the post-MOC um, movement out by the airport. Um, some property in West Glenwood for, can't remember which uh, city function that was, and then something for uh, C dot. Were, what were this, were any of those in excess of five thousand square feet?
Well, C dot, C dot was for sure. The electric building, um, almost certain that it was as well. Airport consisted of two two buildings and several structures. And off the top of my head, I can't remember what the total square footage was. So I I have suspect that you would have reviewed all of those projects anyway, with the exception of the lift station.
Okay, thanks. That gives a good point of reference.
Thank you. Any any more discussion? No, I'll uh, see none and I'll call for the question.
Commissioner Waller.
Um, I'm I'm abstaining. I wasn't in the past conversations.
Commissioners Zippoli? Yes, to approve. Commissioner Dem?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yep.
Commissioner Shacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissing?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you, Jen. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Gretchen, for sticking it out there with us. Um moving on to our first new item tonight. Uh, item six A, which is planning item oh nine twenty, consideration of an annexation and initial zoning rezoning of uh, fifteen point eight one eight acres. And I think that's Trent. And is this where we need to um, move attendees over to panelist promote?
Yes, Mark Allen, would you like for me to read those names out to you?
Uh, we can, we can do that, yeah.
Okay. That's with the applicant applicants, it's gonna be Floyd and John Demos. And let me know if we're going too fast. Barry Rosenberg.
I I I think I'm just, let me open, let me open my email and I'm just gonna cover you guys up and I'll just do it if you wanna start. If you wanna start um, your presentation. It might be easier for me to go through it one at a time.
I'm gonna share my screen with you and if you all will let me know once you see the PowerPoint presentation, I would appreciate that. You got it on your end?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Sorry, okay, thank you. Alright. Again, Trent Hyatt with the Community Development Department. Good evening, Commissioners. This is an annexation rezoning proposal for a project titled four eighty Donigan. And I discussed a little bit with you about this proposal. Um, it includes the annexation of fifteen point eight acres at two fourteen Center Drive. Uh, the rezoning, which is really an initial rezoning following the annexation, includes two pieces. Uh, first, the rezoning of approximately twelve point two five acres to planned unit development. That property is currently used for grazing of animals and agricultural use as well as the storage of various materials. This is the piece of the the proposal that is proposed for significant future development. The three and a half acre parcel located at the southwestern twenty-eight percent of the property um, is the current location of the Glenwood Business Center. It houses approximately two fourteen thousand square foot buildings that include day daycare, office, contractor yards and storage warehouse and uses. There are no changes proposed for that site included in this proposal. I also wanna just point out that this current request is not a a development proposal per se. While it does outline various site layout and building design standards for a future development, there would still be a major in-site architectural plan review required in the future prior to any development.
Hey Trent, Trent, this P. Waller, um, what I'm looking at, and maybe I'm the only one, but your screen is stuck on slide eighteen.
Okay. Let me switch the screen that I'm sharing with you. How about now?
It's on slide five.
Okay, that's the right one. Let's uh, let's go back here a little bit. So to focus on the planned unit development, it does include twelve total buildings that include three three hundred and sixteen residential units, um, houses one, two and three bedroom multifamily units as well as townhomes and live-work-studio units. There is a portion of the project that is proposed um, for affordable housing that would be restricted to a percentage of area of medium income. That would include um, portions of all of the one, two and three bedroom unit in townhomes, but excluding the live-work units. The proposal includes a two thousand square foot restaurant that is intended to be open to the public. Ten thousand square foot clubhouse and pool for the residents, um, as well as a tot lot and other open space lawns. The annexation process is outlining Colorado revised statutes as well as the city code. And an annexation generally is required in the city to obtain various services. In this circumstance, um, water and electric service from the city. It is a voluntary petition that's from the property owner and requires one-sixth contiguity of of a parcel to the city's municipal limits. In this case, two-sixths contiguity exists. The city has to determine determine the positive benefits as well as the potential negative impacts. Solicit public input and we negotiate the terms with the applicant via an annexation agreement. There was a draft annexation agreement included in your packet. City council must then pass a resolution determining substantial compliance. And then that enacts a series of public notices and hearings required where again additional public comment is is taken. Staff in this go-around has has chosen to solicit comment from the commission in the public first to kind of help kind of drive, uh, you know, and and provide input to to the design and site layout. Section seventy sixty forty D of the code requires conformance with the applicable statutes uh, I mentioned previously. Consistency with the comprehensive plan, uh, and this requires the city to evaluate the impacts to the city and the the public health, safety and welfare. I'm gonna focus on the traffic associated with this development, open space improvements, the active recreational facilities, infrastructure capacity as well as compatibility with city goals. This site will have an impact on on traffic in the neighborhoods. Anticipate that it's gonna produce approximately twenty-two hundred weekly daily trips. Now, that's gonna be trips in and out of the development um, on a daily basis. You really wanna take a look at the peak hour of those trips in both the morning and in the afternoon, which in this case is one forty-four and one seventy-seven. The trip distribution in the neighborhood will occur on Donigan Road at the entrance that's um, adjacent and opposite of Chapel Circle. This is intended to be a full movement access um, with a stop sign exiting the development. I think I may have mentioned in staff report that anticipated acceleration lanes two thousand, correct? As well as in picture in here, a four-way stop at the extension of Center Drive. That kind of exists today as a driveway access to the business park. This is intended to be full movement access with a four-way stop required. And we also.
You be seeing your slides? I'm not.
Can you not see them?
Am I the only one not seeing the slides?
I'm still on page five.
I'm still on page five too. It's not.
Okay, we're gonna fix this problem. We're gonna fix it. Sorry about that.
In the meantime, I cannot find Tim Baird. I have one Tim in the attendees list and I'm wondering if that is him. How can we do that? I'm gonna allow this Tim to talk quick. Tim, are you there? Is that you? Is that Tim Baird? I think you muted. No. Okay, well, we'll deal with that when we get there. Jen, do you know?
Hey, I will look it now.
It, uh, slide six, Trent.
Okay, is it moving?
Yes.
Okay. I I apologize for that. Um, in in regards to to highway six and twenty-four, uh, believe it or not, um, the traffic analysis um, provided by Kim Lee Horn actually identifies that improvements are needed there as well uh, to include acceleration lanes, uh, both eastbound left and westbound right, uh, back on highway six and twenty-four. The city does expect that the county would require us to transfer um, some of these adjacent right-ofways um, into the city's ownership or at least maintenance of those um, to make these improvements in the future. That's still kind of a conversation that's being had. I mean, it's not necessarily required, but they may choose to 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 have us take ownership of the roads to make those improvements. Additionally, C dot could require other improvements when an access permit um, i- is is provided or requested. And that would be if there's a twenty percent increase at any intersection related to this project. An increase in bicycle and pedestrian traffic is anticipated, um, and and also um, already kind of occurs um, heavily in this part of West Glenwood. Um, it's especially important because of, you know, some schools that are in the vicinity of the site including Two Rivers Community School as well as the Glenwood Springs Middle School. And the existing heavy commercial and residential traffic in the neighborhood. Currently along Donigan, um, there are no bicycle or pedestrian facilities here and those do not connect to the city um, infrastructure along highway, or I'm sorry, along Donigan Road to the east. What is proposed is separate bicycle and pedestrian paths, um, as well as on-street parking and landscape buffers both for the street as well as lawns adjacent to these roadways, um, and and that connection that I mentioned. Um, it's not proposed today, but we certainly are anticipating at some point a redevelopment of the mall site. Um, and so we've requested connectivity to the Glenwood Mall to the south. Visual and noise impacts, um, there are certainly impacts associated with a proposed built environment for this site. But it doesn't seem really appropriate to to evaluate that impact based on, you know, what the current use is, which is, you know, just seasonal grazing. Um, I think it's really um, better to compare it to what could potentially happen there today based under the car the Garfield County Commercial Limited zoning. Um, we don't necessarily anticipate major noise impacts outside of construction over the the various phases of the of the proposal. Two thousand and eleven Comprehensive Plan Map two point one identifies this specific area as a secondary commercial center. Has a lot to talk about the mall site and this whole entire area of West Glenwood. Uh, but it's targeted for future growth, um, to include mixed-use development. And it also calls out the need for a sub-area plan to determine the mix of those uses. As you see on the map, the purple indicates a mixed-use classification. And various goals are are outlined um, in the comp plan that are supported by this development including the long-term economic development, maintaining our city as the regional center of the county, uh, preserving our small-town character while maintaining livability, addressing transportation in multiple convenient modes, directing development to locations that are cost-effective to serve, providing housing opportunities for the entire community, as well as supporting social diversity and preserving natural resources. Section seventy sixty forty A E F or A three F point three outlines the rezoning approval criteria, one being consistency with the city's comprehensive plan that we discussed. Again, it's clearly consistent with the future land use designation and many of the goals outlined therein. As well as the the code's purpose to protect the public health, wealth, safety and welfare. Two, consistency with the various purpose statements of the proposed zone districts. Um, the business park is consistent with the CO district that's proposed to accommodate um, various commercial and limited residential uses. The CO district does provide a good transition between the mixed uses and residential um, uses that are in this area already. Some of which are are auto-oriented. Um, and it requires special review for higher intensity uses if they were to occur in the future. That would be things such as, you know, manufacturing, gas stations, car washes and such. Three, or I'm sorry, two, continued consistency um, with the PUD is proposed to allow greater flexibility in zoning and development standards that cannot otherwise be achieved by a base zoning district. And that's intended for greater benefit to the city. Um, residential commercial uses are inal- integral components of the mixed-use designation. However, you know, the city does have to realize that, you know, we have a well-established single-family neighborhood um, to the north and western hills as well as single-family homes along Melray Road to the east. And we think that, you know, a a full-on mixed-use development that includes um, a a heavy commercial aspect here does not provide that good transition. Um, you you know, between the residential uses and the the multiple auto cell centers to the to the southwest and the the large area at the mall that's anticipated for redevelopment in the future. But using a PUD to manage that between the various uses seems to be a benefit to the city. Consistency with the purpose statement of the proposed zone district. Um, in regards to the PUD in this specific application, the applicant is proposing varying site-specific building types, um, that, you know, that try to be sensitive to some of those sensitive uses. And that's especially true along Donigan Road. What you see there is a picture, uh, a perspective view of what some of those those homes would look like along Donigan Road across from the single-family neighborhood. That includes smaller scales, limiting story heights. That includes smaller scales, limiting story heights along said road. And kind of the diagram down at the bottom right of your of your screen shows the three contextual height zones that are proposed, ranging from a thirty foot maximum for those buildings along Donegan Road up to a fifty three foot height on the interior of the building where taller, larger buildings are proposed. And all along the exterior of the development, the applicant is proposing wider buffer lines to try to help to to give a little bit of space between the roads and the new structures. Substantial changes warrant a zoning change. The annexation and future development are certainly substantial changes, potentially in the neighborhood. The CO zone district is similar to the county zoning that currently occurs there. And the PU zoning is a tool to help manage future growth. Four, development intensity not expected to create significant adverse impacts. Again, no future development is anticipated at this time in the CO district portion of the property. But the PUD does provide corresponding design standards, as well as improvements to address the impacts of this development. Not only the impacts of this development, but I think that what will be a benefit to the community today. PUD approval criteria are also included in the code, one being that it meets the criteria for a general rezoning that I addressed previously. Two, that it addresses a unique situation, such as the PUD providing for innovative design that acknowledges those transitions. That it includes a housing mix that complements and encourages the redevelopment of the mall in the future. Allows a better means of accomplishing the development of of this site specifically. And the ability to achieve the city's goals in this area. Three, meets applicable standards of the code. Standards not addressed in the PUD would actually just be subject to various code requirements that are that are already outlined. And the PUD that provides residential must include varied housing types and densities as it does. Continuing on that, this proposal, again, as I mentioned, includes a mix of three hundred and sixty units. And with a overall density of approximately twenty nine point three units per acre. That's not inconsistent with some of the larger multifamily developments that we've seen. You know, if you average the last seven developments in the city, we've actually seen a residential density of approximately fifty units per acre. Twenty nine units per acre would be more in line with the Six Canyon Development that's at the intersection of six and twenty four. And that's actually a little bit higher, because it's it's a smaller site, of course. You know, that one would be in the range of thirty two units per acre. What is unique about this is the inclusion of affordable housing units with this proposal to include thirty eight. And that's approximately ten point six percent of the overall units. Now, what you see there on the right is a graph that outlines what the applicant is proposing for a breakdown of those housing units per a hundred and a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. Now, staff would recommend that all of the units proposed for affordable housing would be limited to a hundred percent of area median income, and that would be based on the ordinance that was passed by city council on Thursday night. We received various comments on this proposal from the Community Development Department in regards to housing, the Engineering Department, the Colorado Department of Transportation, Garfield County Community Development, Garfield County Road and Bridge, Public Works, Transit and Planning and Development Lead, the West Glenwood Sanitation District, and the Roaring Fork RE School District. We received a significant amount of public comments on this. And I would say my recollection is that all but one person listed on this slide are all in opposition to the proposal. You can see here on the left hand side are comments that we received prior to the dismissal of the full application and following the applicant's neighborhood meeting, and then all those that we have received since then on the right. Section seventy sixty thirty G one D allows you to recommend the city council approval, approval with conditions or denial. You can also continue this application, which we expect you to do tonight regardless. Staff does recommend approval of with conditions of the action items. And you can find the findings and conditions on pages fifteen and sixteen. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time and or after the applicant presents you as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Trent. Back to the commission, any questions to staff at this point? Please raise your hand. And we'll start with, let's see, Commissioner Shaver, please.
Trent, I'm wondering about the slope of the property from the Donegan Road side toward the mall, which is what direction? What direction is that?
South.
Okay, from north to south. Do you have a sense of what the the slope of the property might be?
George, I don't know the exact slope. It's it's not too intense because of the 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 large length of that distance. And I want to say that the overall grade change, the applicant's engineer could probably tell you exactly, but I want to say it was, you know, ten to twenty feet even.
Okay, and is there is there a rendering of the Storm King side, which? What is that, the west, west side of the property?
There is, not looking south, but looking at one of the buildings that's proposed there at the the Center Drive. And I could pull that up if need be. That was included in the in the plan set.
Okay, I'll look back at that. Thank you.
Thank you, and moving on to Commissioner Shakhtar, please.
Sumner, you're muted.
Sorry, I have quite a few questions of staff. I tried to wait to raise my hand. I have questions, not comments, but if anybody else would like to go first, I'd be willing to defer and see if some of my questions are answered by other commissioners' questions.
I think you're already talking. You might as well go. You muted again.
I'm unmuted now. Trent, some of this is just clarification and for the record. And I think your slide mentions, my understanding with the with the application of annexation, there are very few conditions that this commission. There's virtually no, not much limit to the conditions that can be proposed. Is that correct? Since it's a, it's almost a negotiation process?
Correct, Sumner. You know, we we have certainly tried to to work with the applicant to date to include a lot of the things that that we thought were appropriate for the development. But it is a negotiation between the applicant and ultimately city council who would
Right.
want to receive your input.
And then, once once all the conditions are met, and ultimately it's a council decision, is that correct? It moves from us to kind of public council. Once the conditions are recorded, both for the annexation and the PUD, then anything else defaults to existing city ordinances? Is that in our building code? Is that correct?
Correct. Anything that's not specifically addressed in the PUD plan would be subject to the city code.
Okay. And again, clarification. The boundary for the city is at north of Donegan is county, is that Western Hills is all county? Is that correct?
That is correct. I think that was probably one of the slides you couldn't see earlier.
Well, you had you had it with a yellow dash boundary, I believe, at some point. What about directly, directly west of Storm King? How much of that is from Storm King to Mitchell Creek? Is that all county as well, or some of that city?
No, some of that is city to include Two Rivers Community School, as well as the condominium development to the west of that.
Okay. This will be related to comments later, but to your knowledge, since you highlighted this CO district is an area for future study, including this property and the mall. Has there been any, to your knowledge, and we'll ask the applicant later, any joint consideration of redevelopment of both parcels? Since they're both in the same area of study?
We have certainly encouraged that, and I think that there have been conversations. I'm sure the applicant can tell you specifically.
Okay. Regarding traffic, the traffic input study covers the immediate area, both highway six and Donegan. The traffic study, or can we request, I guess, a traffic study that goes further than that? What is the impact? And I'm going to assume that Terry's here. A broader area of study, since this is a significant amount of traffic that's mostly, I assume, going to move toward town. Can we ask for proposed suspected impacts on the bridge, on the roundabout, and other surrounding areas as it flows into town? That's one question. And also, related to this, based on past history and so many of the comments from the Garfield County residences, is there the possibility of a safety study similar to what Terry Parches has has done related to fire corridor and danger and times of evacuation that was done in the South Midland area? This would seem another area that might be appropriate to request that type of study. Again, a question, has it, has it, has it come up? The other question, Trent, to me is, how do we determine the the cost of annexation? I know there are impact fees significantly that will be paid. I'm not sure they cover long term costs to the community. So does the Colorado Municipal League or your planning organizations have some kind of metric for a development like this? Whether it be a per bedroom basis or some other basis says, look, in the long term, here's what the cost will be to fire, police, road damage, infrastructure and things like that. Again, that's a question. I don't know the answer. I'm asking the question. Also, related to this would be a question about our water system. We we are in the throes of a pretty hot political item that looks like the residents of Glenwood, the existing residents of Glenwood are going to face some pretty significant water rate increases immediately and for the next decade. What is the impact of three hundred and sixty more units on that? Does it increase the cost that we're talking about in terms of our infrastructure and our needs since a fire? Or does it decrease the need per capita? It would be a question that I think should be addressed. The the other question I had, I couldn't tell our, and maybe you or the applicant answer, are any of these units owned versus rented? In terms of the housing mix? That would be another question, Trent, regarding breakdown. Let me see. Hopefully, the applicant, you will define what live work residences mean. And again, are they rented or owned? I noticed in the report, there was some question about storm drainage or storm water conditions may not be adequate for certain runoffs. It wasn't clear from your, from the report whether these would be addressed through storage and and mitigation at the beginning, or just as it happens. I guess I'd want some more clarification on that. Another question, I couldn't read your slide very well. What is the maximum height forty three feet? And was C, was zone C thirty three feet? I couldn't tell. At first I shuddered and thought it might be fifty three feet. So I want some clarification with the maximum height at least posed. And 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 related all this, you talk about proposed standards. When we're talking about a PUD and we're not actually talking about the development permit, I guess I'd want to know, and maybe the public would want to know, what are we really agreeing to conceptually here? Is this, even though it's not the development permit itself, is this, is this layout cast in stone? Is the number of units cast in stone, short of another reapplication? So I guess I'd like to know more clarification about what proposed standards really means should this PUD be developed, should this plan be approved? Your, your, your comments about Donegan and the improvements were, was your intent that the developer pay for all those? Because like she said, there are clearly no bike lanes right now. I know this is a lot of questions, but I think that's, that's all I have for now for you, Trent. There'll be more later, I'm sure.
Sure, I I I was gonna say, we we might want to start taking a stab at some of these while we can remember what they are. Terry, would you like to to start?
They were a question.
So I I caught and wrote down three of them, so I hope that you got the rest, Trent. I'll start with, has, well, I'll start with the traffic question. Could we broaden the traffic study? Yes, we could. What happens when you, when you broaden the traffic study, though, is that the influence of the project becomes less and less on each intersection? We're currently thinking about something similar in the in the Meadows area. And, you know, we have picked a, you know, an area of town of influence, but you know, it, each, at each intersection, you know, the traffic disperses and the influence becomes less and less. And, you know, we really, as a city, don't have a standard that we have set about, you know, when improvements would be required, for instance, at an intersection, like C dot keeps the twenty percent twenty percent standard, so you affect the traffic volume by twenty percent, and then you're required to do improvements at that intersection. And and we don't really have a similar standard. But that would be a way to assess, you know, traffic as it moved further and further out, you know, what is the amount of impact? And in this particular study, you know, C dot's actually only, you know, assessed a twenty percent increase at Mel, at Melray. And I know that they've at least gone to the intersection of Donegan and Highway six and, you know, no, no additional requirements have been required, or, you know, determined there. Does that is your question there? So the answer is yes, we we could. And then, you know, you asked if a study had been done to address fire safety and evacuation. Not that I know of. Could it be done? Certainly. You know, and the way that, you know, I would do it would be to assess an evacuation to, you know, exits, the nearest exits to Highway six, similarly to what was done in the South Glenwood corridor, you know, moving all the people to twenty seventh and State Highway eighty two. So that could be done, you know, we would just have to ask for that. And you also asked about storm drainage adequacy. It is true that on Highway six and, you know, C dot put a lot of very small culverts in to cross the frontage road a long time ago. And so almost every development that we have, you know, comes up against those very small culverts. So we often require new development to detain water on site to allow, you know, the storms to move through those smaller culverts more slowly and allow that that capacity to be maintained. But we also have the option of, you know, requiring the developer, in this case, to replace culverts to, you know, bring the runoff all the way to the Colorado River, should we choose to do that. I think those were the ones that that I caught. Trent, do you want to move on to yours?
I think Carl, please.
For just a quick second on the, I think it was the second question. In terms of fire study, I would say it's, you know, that presents a particular problem for us in terms of nexus, right? And in what is, you know, what are you exacting out of this developer in terms of what would be a very large study area that, like Terry undertook in for South Glenwood? You know, versus, and and the expertise that would be developed locally to be able to do that, you know, versus having the developer do it. And so I think that's one of those things that, you know, I think we'd have to think carefully about as we move forward on on the project, if that's what we were looking for.
I agree.
And Summer to try to answer some of your additional questions. This is intended to be a for rent development. So all the units would be owned by the and operated by the applicant. The maximum height of some of the larger interior buildings is fifty three feet. You did see that correctly?
Okay.
Does that cover all your questions, Summer?
No, not quite, but. Trent, what about what about? These proposed standards, what? If if this if this were approved, just it won't, I'm, there's a long process, but. If this, what's in front of us were approved as is tonight as a in terms of the P U D district. What 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 is guaranteed in terms of the ultimate end result when the development permit is requested?
Summer, I I I think with this proposal, you have a a pretty precise site layout. Now, you know, I mean, again. In terms of of changes to site layout, you know, general design intent or anything that's specified. You know, on that P U D sheet of the plan set, you know, we would be looking at something that was a substantial change. And determining whether or not it met the the code requirements for substantial change. But, you know, I I I think you're you're pretty limited. To, you know, to the the site layout design, the zone standards. That are are outlined already by the applicant here in, you know, I mean, we we thing that is lacking in this application would be. Specific architectural elevations for every single facade of each building. And that would be what you'd be reviewing at the at the major site and architectural plan review phase. And you would have, you'd be able to make an opinion on whether or not it was in compliance with those standards.
So if I hear you correctly, what we're seeing here. Short of additional detail or an application or a change in application is pretty much in general what we would get in terms of. Types of units, number of units and site layout.
Correct. And and if 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 staff during our review of a future development application determined that that they did. Include a substantial change, we would ask them to bring an amendment to the P U D alongside or concurrently with that application to you.
Thank you. One of the other questions, Trent, as a planner or maybe. Carl, some maybe there's no answer there, but are there some kind of metrics as to what the long term cost? Of annexation is net kind of a net cost of annexation? We know we're getting fees that offset supposedly. Some of the costs of of development, but that's true whether annexation or not. In this case. I'm wondering, are there some metrics on a bedroom basis, something? What is the cost to a city? To acquire this this many residences?
You know, Summer, I can answer that just kind of in general terms, having worked on a lot of these over the years. I can tell you that residential never pays, and if you did a strict cost analysis on the benefit to the city, you would only approve commercial development in any city. Because it provides a tax base, since we don't have property tax base in. Property tax for revenue stream, England would spring. So. When you start from that premise, you're always working from zero and down. You can get into some fairly complicated metrics about what does that mean to the local economy? What does it mean in terms of dollars spent in in a store? And how many times that circulates in a community? You can get as you can do it as high a level or as detailed a level as you want. But there's always going to be, I think, at the upfront, a net negative, you know, related to fire, police. Streets. The one difference with that is probably utilities, which always do better at scale. And that was one of your questions early on about, does it help the water system or hurt? In general, the more customers that a utility system has, the better it is for the utility system. Because this will be new infrastructure being put in, new connections being made, the the maintenance load is far lower. But the customer base, it's there to help spread out costs for the entire system is it increases the number of customers. So. Like I said, there there's really not a great formula that, you know, the statute requires some level of any annexation report to be done. It's always difficult to determine exactly what those impacts are going to be.
Thank you. So likewise, we don't know. If I hear you correctly, Carl, that it probably wouldn't negative and wouldn't positively or negatively affect though the. It might positively, but might not negatively affect the current needs of the city related to the fire and the need for water, new water filtration and infrastructures. That probably wouldn't change at this point, might be long term positive?
Yeah, I think that's I think that's fair to say. And I know Matt isn't here because he's enjoying spring break, but. He and I have been working on, you know, what, you know, kind of that that long term picture on on both the legal and the physical side on water. And in, you know, to the extent it's inside our service area. And that we have the capacity to provide that water, which we currently do, it does distribute the costs out over more customers.
The other thing I think Trent didn't answer, I know Donigan is is Donigan currently a county road? Is that correct?
It is adjacent to this development, correct.
So given that it's a county road, you don't know. If I were the county, I'd turn it over to the city, of course, but we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen. What's your, what do you, what kind of proposal are you making in terms of the proposed? Bike pedestrian and traffic improvements on Donigan? Who would bear that cost? And who would upkeep that particular those improvements?
Well, the city would be responsible for long term maintenance after any warranty period from the developer. But, you know, with all of these various factors and improvements that we're discussing with this annexation. It's the city's intent that the developer bear all of the costs of those improvements. That's pretty standard with an annexation and with most of our our developments, whether in the city or out. You know, the the city doesn't want to bear any additional costs for the the benefit of of a certain development proposal.
And I thank you. You guys have helped. I've asked a lot of questions. There was one more question, Trent. Maybe you can't even answer at this point. In terms of. Three hundred and some units estimated. Residents, I believe you reported back to us at one point, based on what we knew about the lofts. That about one third of the residents already lived in Glenwood, about one third didn't live here, but worked here, and about one third were. Working up Valley. Is there any? Is there any reason to? Believe that that demographic wouldn't be similar in a development like this?
You know, I just based on actual raw data, you know, that's that's something that we would anticipate moving forward. You know, and and I think it's it's important to kind of put that into perspective a little bit, you know, I mean, let's say that. A third of the residents are coming from existing housing within the city. Well, you know, someone's likely to fill those spaces at some point.
Right.
But, you know, I think what a major concern and about any development proposal is the traffic associated with that. And I think, again, with this one, you know, you have that concern of, you know, evacuation of the area. But, you know, being a West Glenwood resident myself, the the issues that I encountered last summer with with traffic were. Not necessarily associated with the people that lived in West Glenwood. It was the it was the folks that were trying to get out of town. That didn't live here, you know, if those folks were going other directions, up Valley, east or west, those problems wouldn't have been as significant as they were at the time.
I'm almost finished, Trent. Thank you. Is there any? Is there any structure? In what we would call West Glenwood anywhere that's? Over fifty feet in height?
No, no.
All right. And as a plan, did the planning department have any issues with fifty three feet feet as a maximum? I didn't notice any reservation in the comments.
No, not really. And you know, as I outlined in my presentation, you know, we've tried to understand height contextually at the site. There is a significant grade change from Donigan Road. The applicant originally wanted to place higher. Larger, bulkier, larger mass buildings along Donigan Road, and we had a lot to say about trying to. Make that transition between a single family neighborhood or home with those heights along Donigan being a maximum of two stories. Total three stories, because it would be a, you know, a walkout on the backside as, you know, working with that grade. Additionally, you know, some of the large buffer lawns that are around the perimeter of the development, you know, again, help to buffer those larger buildings.
Okay, I did have one more that I forgot. We were talking about the common and open space. Twenty percent of what? Well, how how many square feet are actually required? Under our code for development this size for fifteen acres or maybe, I don't know if you count the commercial or not. But for either twelve or fifteen acres, how many square feet of common and open space are required? Under our current code, Trent?
It's not a square footage basis. It's twenty percent of of the entirety of the development parcel, so twenty percent of the the twelve and quarter acres.
Twenty percent of the twelve and quarter acres. Okay, so.
Now, I think that if you take a look at the C O development sheet, you know, they have reserved open space for the existing business park as well.
Right. And at this point. You and the applicant, or at least the applicant is proposing that the public restaurant be included as part of that space?
Correct.
Okay. I think for now, I've I I appreciate your forbearance, everybody. That's all my questions at this point. I warned you. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Thanks, Trent and Terry and Carl. Any other questions to staff at this point? From the commission? I just I need a quick clarification, Trent, if you, oh, Pete.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how to do the raise my hand thing. I'm looking at all these buttons here and I can't figure it out. So sorry about that. Yeah, I had a few questions too, and I had a lot of my checked off. So bear with me a little bit. Lot of them been answered and and I understand on the on the traffic study on the. On on trying to get it outside too far for balance, it sounds like the traffic study, you know, went to. Went to Highway six and twenty four. And I a question I have is 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 around the capacity of the roundabout. You know, I mean, that's that's something, as we all know, and the roundabouts are difficult to, you know, at peak times is more where they are. And so my question is, is a little bit with that, but also. You know, hopefully someday something happens with the mall and some people actually go there, you know, there's a. Something in the stores where, you know, those big boxes are. And and I don't know, I drove up the road up towards Amy Acres, and I don't know what's happening up that way as well, but but I so what my. Question is, is for just that area, Terry, and that. And for that roundabout, taking this development, but also. The potential growth of the others and and, you know, is there is there a a capacity on the roundabout that, you know, we all? You know, we love them in Colorado, but do they, you know, outweigh their use? At some time, and there's another traffic way. That's one question. That's my first question.
So Pete, you know, I really honestly don't know what the capacity of the roundabout is, and I'm not sure, you know. Exactly what C dot used for their future traffic projections. So I would need to get back to you on that and to see if if, you know, they thought that that was going to be an issue, a capacity issue at the roundabout.
Okay, yeah, that's fair. And and then, I mean, when there's an evacuation, that's a whole nother chaos. That's a whole different thing that I'm not even asking about. On the roads. It sounds like the city is going to pick up Donigan. I mean, I mean, to me, it seems fair that the city would pick up the roads surrounding and. Storm King seems like, boy, that's in great shape, you know, and that when when you guys did Storm King and coming in there and I kind of drove in that little. Access there, that seems great. Donigan is not so good. And then the one that's even worse, that's horrible is Melray is. Is, oh, my God, Melray is like. I don't know, some old video game I used to play years ago, you know, of what you might hit going down there. So. Is is Melray a road that would be, because I think a lot of people, you know, there will be the Storm King entrance, and then there will also be the Donigan entrance for the residents. And I think, you know, it'd be nice to see everyone goes up Storm King, but I think a lot of people from the roundabout, like I just do all the time, you just go up Melray. So is is Melray a road that the city will? Will pick up as well? Because, you know, it's kind of a hodgepodge between county and city. Down low and 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 for the improvement and widening it, there's not a lot of space to widen it. Anyway, so Melray is a question I have.
Trent, do you want to answer that, or I can? Give the staff opinion? Why don't you take a shot at it first?
Yeah, you know, actually, early on, Pete. Analysis of with an analysis of Melray, I actually expected there to be a greater importance placed on it. But according to the traffic analysis, it seems like more more is directed towards Storm King or actually to Donigan further to the west. Or I'm sorry, further to the east. The road is, you know, in terms of of lane width, you know, it's okay if the city were to take over Melray Road. Or require improvements there, too. I know we would want to see it regraded and improved, possibly with some pedestrian. Infrastructure, at least the sidewalk, the, you know, and we're really not sure in terms of ownership of of Melray. This portion of Donigan and or of Storm King, that the county is going to require us to take those. We we can in terms of the those that are directly adjacent to the development, but we but we can't. For, you know, roads that are off site where we'd like to see some improvement.
Yeah, no, I I get that. I get that. It's it's the old connecting things as you go when you pick that up. Okay, yeah, because Melray for me is a mess. And I think for me coming there, if I was going into the development, I would come into Melray, but. Okay, next question I have is, and Carl kind of talked at this with, it sounds like he and Matt are. Working on the infrastructure plan and and, you know, the rates are getting ready to go up a lot. And it sounds like the 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 West Glenwood sanitation district's taken over part of this. So it's kind of interesting as I. Read through that, but is is there a and is is this part of what what Matt's doing to try to figure out, you know, as we annex something new in? Yet we have, you know, vacant parcels within the within this within the city limits that are. You know, not that they're easy to develop, you know, there there are some difficult things there to be done, but but as those fill in, if you just made assumptions and say. X number of units went on, you know, the the mall, let's say the mall went away and became a housing place and. You know, all these different places around that 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 when do we hit the capacity where, oh, my gosh, we got to do a major. Capacity increase at the wastewater treatment facility. That's probably the main one I'm thinking about.
So. West Glenwood is served by the West Glenwood Sanitation District, who did some fairly major upgrades ten or fifteen years ago. Maybe a little bit more than that. It it always seems like they and and we are a little bit out of sequence. So from a sewer capacity standpoint, we're really in a pretty good place because West Glenwood is in a good place to take on these additional customers. And even beyond that, if you look, you know, thirty down thirty years down the road, when when perhaps we're operating as a unified district or unified system. There's capacity in our current wastewater treatment facility as well. So from that standpoint, I don't think there's a lot of concerns. And like I mentioned with the water, it's certainly something that we try to plan for both on a capacity and a production side. Raw water capacity that we have and then a production side, what can we actually produce and deliver?
Okay, thanks. And I I kind of know how the P U D thing kind of works. I mean, it kind of. Comes in with new code and then wherever you don't have the P U D, then 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 the existing code works. So so I guess the question I would have, Trent, and I kind of saw you had the A, B and C sections and they're different heights. In there and you're trying to step back the heights from. The town homes, that stuff, maybe higher heights in the back. And 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 I guess my, you know, from reading a lot of the neighbors' comments as well. And and I and maybe to George's comment, I I saw, boy, that that it it seems like coming right off of Donigan. Boy, that the slope drops down really fast right there into the area. And I know. Sopris or whatever, they'll do a great job on the grading for that. But but my 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 question is, from the height right on Donigan, is is that something? i- is, is that something that could be stepped down? You know, I would just like to ask that question, um, to, to step it down quicker for the, for the housing units. And then it steps up further as you get closer to the, um, to the mall in the back to the, to the south. So maybe that's not a question. That's more of a, a comment of something I would like to see.
Certainly, certainly open for discussion, uh, Pete. You know, I, I will say that, you know, we're, we're trying to limit the height of those buildings along Donegan to two stories at grade. And, and you know, they also are incorporating a significant thirty foot buffer lawn even between the other roadway improvements that are proposed. So, you know, and I don't really know in any zone district in the city where, you know, a two-story building is, is, is not allowed. So tried to at least limit it at that location.
Yeah, okay, um, let's see. Oh, here's, here's my question. So Sumner kind of, he, he got the, the parks and open space thing. And it sounded like from your report that, that the twenty percent wasn't, it sounded like that was kind of up in the air and you're still working with them on that to get those numbers to, to, to work out. There was some offsite improvements, trying to count those and various sorts of things. And I, what my comment is, is, is on the restaurant, if that's included in there. And, you know, we know how restaurants go. They, sometimes they make it, sometimes they don't. And, and, and I, what I'm thinking is that, you know, let's say that the restaurant didn't go with the P U D be set. I'm assuming that, that if the restaurant doesn't go, that then there needs to be some sort of other type of business that's in that space that works because, you know, we know how restaurants work around here sometimes, especially if they're not right in the corridor, you know, down in an open space or anyway.
Yeah, I could speak to that a little bit. I would say one, um, at two thousand square feet, the, the restaurant that is intended to be open to the public is a very small percentage of the required, um, twenty percent open space. I would say that, that number is not really negotiable. We're not really, we're, we're not really still working on that. They are required to provide twenty percent common open space to the interior of the development. The applicant has told us, um, you know, they intend to on and operate this long term. You know, this company is, is not new to the game. They're not a flip development. And they've actually operated some of these bars slash restaurants in their developments at a loss, um, just to have these as an amenity for the applicant. Now, the, the P U D is specific that that space will be used for a restaurant. So if it were to fail, if it were not to be used as a restaurant, they would actually have to amend the P U D in the future.
Okay, good, okay. That's all that I have at this time too. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, any other questions to staff? I just have a quick one, Trent, and I'm, I'm sure you mentioned it, but I was looking for panelists. Um, so I kind of missed the beginning on the, uh, traffic study. You said, uh, twenty-two hundred additional trips is what, uh, what the three sixty units will bring?
The price mentally on a weekday.
On a week, and that's just, uh, is that, that's split up to certain rush hours or certain?
Yeah, that's, that's trips in and out of the development on a daily basis. And then of course, um, you know, you have your A M peak out, peak hour and your P M peak hour. One of the major discussions about this, Marco, has been how that interacts with school traffic. And I think what you'll hear from their traffic, um, engineer is that those are, are at different peak hours. So there's not going to be as much conflict there a- as one might anticipate.
Okay, and did you, um, do we have current? I don't know, traffic studies that tell us how busy these streets already are?
Yeah, I, there's an analysis of that in, in, in the, in the traffic report that was provided in terms of existing conditions, um, as well as, um, future conditions based on current traffic as well as future conditions based on traffic with this development.
Okay, it's, you, sorry, you don't know that top of your head. Again, I guess not. Um, it's, it's hard to juggle all your beautiful faces here and then scroll through the, uh, whole packet to find certain information. So I'll, I'll dig through it here in a little while and see what I can find, but, um, that was my only question is the, uh, what's the, the current numbers and what's the, uh, the increase we know is, is twenty-two hundred. So, uh, thank you, Trent. Commissioner Zipperly, please.
I would just like to, uh, get a little clarification on some items that Sumner mentioned. With, this is one of my first P U D, um, concerns here. So since they have provided sort of rough massing heights and building layouts, if we, uh, if we eventually were approved, the P U D application, we've lost a lot of room for compromise and further discussions because they have basically represented what they intend. And by us approving that, we would be sort of okaying that aside from some minor refinements and building elevations and materials. Is that right?
Yeah, you know, I think anything that would be considered a substantial change, which is generally, you know, fifteen percent of various factors in the code, Carolyn, would, would require an amendment, but you know, that's, that's kind of the intent of, of why we brought this to you now, you know, if you want to see refinements, if you do want to see changes, we certainly want to hear that.
Okay, and then, um, my other question was about, uh, so the twenty percent open space is just for the residents. The uh, restaurant would be open to the public, but are any of the other like tot lots and lawn play areas, would they be available to the neighbors? Or are they private?
They would be intended to be for residents of the development, but I'll, I'll let the, the applicant talk about, you know, whether they would be open to allowing them for use for the public.
Hmm, okay, that's all. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Zipperly. And, and Trent, I'm scrolling through here and I found the, uh, the traffic reports and there's lots and lots of pages. And I'm just trying to find a summary and I haven't found it yet. So if you could do me a favor for next meeting, if you could just give me the current with the new, just a quick side note, if that's possible, please. Thank you, Trent. Um, okay, excellent. Any, uh, any other questions to staff at this point? No, we'll see none. We'll, I'll let the applicant come forward and present your item. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Haley Karmar. I'm an attorney at Garfield and Heck, and we represent the applicant and their really, their affiliate R two partnership who will be ultimately developing this project, um, if it gets approved. Uh, we wanted to thank on behalf of our team, all of you for the time tonight and, and to staff for working with, with us through this application process. So I wanted to, I'm kind of emceeing tonight at least, but I think, uh, just wanted to give you an overview of our presentation this evening. Uh, we're going to start with, uh, having some statements from John and Floyd Demos who the, who are the current owners of the property. Their partners under of the Glenwood Springs or of the Glenwood Partnership. Uh, from there, we'll ask Barry Rosenberg to give sort of an overview of our, our two partnership and, uh, our team and our general vision for this project. From there, we'll pass it off to our design team and engineers to give you some additional details on, uh, the project and maybe answer some of the questions that, came from the commission so far. So with that, I will turn it over to the Demoses.
Thank you. I'm Floyd Demos and I appreciate, uh, talking to you. I'm the managing partner of Glenwood Partnership and we're a family-owned partnership located, as you know, two fourteen Center Drive in West Glenwood. Turns out that my grandparents immigrated from Northern Italy and made the Northern Port Valley their home in about nineteen hundred. And my wife and I are both natives of Glenwood Springs. Well, we own, as you know, about fifteen point eight acres of privately owned and commercially zoned land in West Glenwood. And we're not within the city limits, as you know. And today we're petitioning really for the annexation of that land into the city. We are under a contract to sell approximately twelve point three acres of our vacant land to, um, R two partnership. And they propose to develop the land as multifamily housing project. And we know that they work diligently in their effort to follow the vision that the city comprehensive plan of a number of years ago was drawn up. And we believe their project would be benef- beneficial as an addition to Glenwood Springs because we know that there is a need for housing. We're truly impressed with them. And they have a proven track record and we've checked on some of the things they've done in other areas and they really are professional people. And we believe that they will develop our last remaining vacant land as a responsible, in a responsible manner, as well as be a good neighbor to the community. But we will be retaining three and a half acres of our Glenwood Business Center. And even though it is part of this annexation, we will still own our business center. And I'd like to have my son, John, give us some background of the history of this property.
Good evening. I'm John Demos, uh, a Glenwood Partnership partner. More than sixty years ago in nineteen sixty, my grandparents, Adolf and Edith Demos purchased approximately thirty acres of privately owned land in West Glenwood as an investment property. At that time, an easement and right of way was established with the neighboring property. And the neighboring property were the owners to the west for joint usage for a future road for development purposes. This road would extend from highway six and head north to Donegan Road. That road is now known as Storm King Road. Subsequently, my grandparents and their children formed a Glenwood Partnership. In nineteen eighty, they sold approximately fourteen acres of land for the Glenwood Springs Mall. In nineteen eighty-one, Garfield County issued a special use permit to partnership for a commercial park with the ability to build fifteen buildings on the remaining fifteen point acres of vacant land. That same year, construction began on our first phase of the Glenwood Business Center development, which was to include two office warehouse buildings of approximately fifteen thousand square foot each with associated landscaping and parking. In May of nineteen eighty-two, we completed our first building. At that time, we also built Storm King Road located west of our building and north to Donegan Road. The cost for the road's construction, including sidewalks and land, was paid for equally by Glenwood Partnership and the adjacent property owner to our west. The road was then deeded by Glenwood Partnership to Garfield County. Additionally, in nineteen eighty-one, water, storm sewer, sanit- sanitary sewer, gas, electric and phone lines were installed into our property primarily at our south property line, which adjoins the mall. This was, this was done to service our future development needs. For landscape irrigation, the Reynolds and Kane ditch is utilized. No domestically treated water is needed for any current or future development on our parcel for landscape purposes. Construction on our second building was canceled in nineteen eighty-two due to an economic downturn. However, in two thousand and seven, we built our second office warehouse building at the Glenwood Business Center and completed what you would now see today. Our tenants include construction contractors who utilize office and warehouse space, an interior design firm, a geotechnical engineering firm, federal and state government offices, Smart Start and a Montessori preschool. We do not propose any changes with usage on our retained property. Some public comments in opposition to this application describe our property as being open space, green space and a future park and community meeting place. Yet our property is privately owned and has never been under any open space designation, Parkland designation or conservation easement. The partnership's buildings, site improvements and remaining undeveloped land have been commercially zoned for decades as well as taxed at a commercial, not agricultural rate. In April, we'll pay Garfield County seventy-two thousand dollars in property taxes, which is calculated at the commercial rate. We thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Uh, Barry, you want to take over?
Sure. My name is Barry Rosenberg. Uh, I am a managing member of R two Partners. R two Partners is a family business. We have been developing multifamily for over sixty-one years now. Uh, started by my father, Marvin Rosenberg. I think one of the things is, is that we are, um, long-term thinkers and long-term holders, which is I think one of the reasons that the Demoses is wanted to work with us. We still own and operate most of the properties that we have developed over those sixty-one years. We have several properties that are fifty plus years old and still operate in our maintained a kind of a class A status. As a matter of fact, continually being redeveloped and still continuing to get kind of the top rents in the market. So unlike a lot of the developers that we see today, I think one of the things is, is that as a family, we are a long-term holder with kind of a legacy of long-term integrity in our thinking and how we think about development. One of the biggest things when you look at the type of developments that we've developed over time, is that we have developed a sense of community within our developments. And I think one of the things that we're trying to do here is also create a sense of community. And part of what we're doing here in doing that is creating a pretty dynamically amenitized residential community built around strong outdoor public spaces, as you can see. And also creating a very diversified housing types, as was pointed out, live, work, studios, townhouses, one, two and three bedrooms. And even though it's not a direct classification, uh, but affordable housing, which also kind of adds another dimension. So you've got a multitude of people living here built around strong spaces. And I think further looking at, which has been talked about, is the upgrade of Donegan to adding sidewalks, adding bike lanes, creating a two-story, two stories along there that I think also just kind of helped play and work with the, uh, single family that's on the other side. I think as also was pointed out, we've pushed for a thirty-foot setback along our properties as well, so that again, kind of maintaining that, that, um, transition. Again, I think one of the things that we've done and has been mentioned here as well is that we've really tried to look at your comprehensive plan, which is really kind of, I guess, the blueprints for the city that you've put together. And one of the things that this site has been done as a mixed-use development, and I think as Trent had pointed out, looking at a transition from single-family homes to a mall development. We think we've tried to take that into account, particularly when you look at the scale of the buildings and the densities, which clearly get a little bit more significant as you get closer to the mall. And obviously a lot less as you get along Donegan as well. Uh, and I do believe, I think the question was asked, but the drop, the, the, uh, Donegan to the mall is about a twenty-foot drop. So the buildings do continue to tier down so they don't feel overwhelming as you get to the mall itself. I think the other thing that I just wanted to mention was, is that kind of really quickly is introduce the team that we put together because I think it's important. Two key groups to this team is, uh, H C M. They are Hoard, Kaplan, Mac. It's a, uh, architectural firm. It's been in business for over forty years. Probably one of the premier multifamily architects in the country. They also have done a lot of work in Denver in the mountains. So they're very familiar with this area. They were the, the architects for the Two Rivers School. Granted, it was a redevelopment or reposition of an old post office, but are clearly familiar with this. But one of the things that was important to us in selecting H C M was the ability to the integration of design and the public spaces. They're one of the few major architectural firms that also has their own landscaping architectural firm within house. And so that they could work seamlessly in really thinking about these buildings as they relate to the open space and to the view, views throughout the whole area. So it was, is an important component. The other group that you're going to hear from is Sopris. It's a locally owned and operated group in the Roaring Fork. Probably worked on most of the major projects in the valley. They've been in this area for over twenty-seven years, um, and I think highly respected in this area. So again, I think overall, we've put together a, a, a very significant team with a long-term vision. So again, I think overall, we've put together a very significant team with a long-term vision for what we plan to do here.
All right, and turn it over to Matthew Fitzsimmons from HCM. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Matthew Fitzsimmons. I'm a planner and architect with Hoard, Copeland, Mact. I'm also joined by my colleagues Miguel Irola, who is a landscape architect, and Dan Kessler, who is a, is kind of the lead housing architect on the team. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the development. I'm going to take a step back and just kind of review the context. And I, the focus of the, my presentation is really going to focus on the, how the PUD standards apply to the design, I think, between Trent and and Barry, you described a lot of the project, but I just want to kind of tie in any, hopefully any loose gaps in, in kind of the, our summary of, of the project and how it relates to those standards. And then I'm going to pass the baton to Yancey at Sopris Engineering. Again, this, this view here, it's upside down. You're looking south to the Red Mountain. Just for context, our site is in red. It's about two tenths of a mile from Highway six and Route seventy. And Donegan Road is, in this view, on the bottom of the site, which is actually the north end of the site. And so you can see our site is located next to, or behind to the north of Glenwood Mall, which is between us and Route Highway six. What you don't see to the left is, I guess, downtown Glenwood Springs, and that's about two miles to the east, which is page left. So I've right-sided the, the view. This is an aerial view looking straight down. North is corrected. It is up on this view. A lot of discussion tonight, again, will be focused on what's in red, which is the twelve point two eight acres. The, the site is located, as well as the, the office site, which is the Glenwood Business Center, which is one of the two lots that are being considered for the annexation and rezoning. You can see the, the yellow line, which wraps down along the south side of those two parcels, but north of the mall, that is the, the current boundary between the city and the county. In, in general, in terms of surrounding uses, there's a variety of uses, but in general, to the south, we, we are confronted by commercial uses, car dealerships, auto-oriented uses closer to Highway six, and of course, the Glenwood Mall. And then to the north, north of Donegan, in general, it's, it's residential predominantly single-family. But there is that transition, and we've talked a lot about this, this evening, transition going from Highway six up to Donegan. There's a lot of variations in, in intensities of uses going from the mall, which predominantly commercial, but there's the office uses between, on, on the southwest corner of the site. And then along Melray, there's a variety of commercial as well as residential uses. And then a little further east are multifamily. And I believe a little further to the west of the Two Rivers Community School is also townhouses and some more multifamily. So there's this spectrum or transect of different intensities of uses going from Highway six up to the north. And hopefully, you'll see in our site development plan, we want to respect that transition and really influences how we've laid this out. We have two frontages. We have Storm King Road to the west, which runs north-south. And we have Donegan Road that runs east-west along the north side of the site. The southeast and the southwest corners of, or property boundaries of the site are adjacent to adjacent to residential along Melray, and then the commercial to the south. Topographically, we, we have a pretty constant slope coming from Donegan, which sits high and slopes down to the mall site. It's depending on where you take this measurement, it is roughly between sixteen to twenty-seven feet of grade change going down. And well, that'll come into play as we talk about building heights further in this presentation. In terms of the rezoning, this is, uh, this is the sheet from the submission. It shows Lot One, which is the existing Glenwood Business Center right here, kind of shaded in red. This is being proposed to go to a CO, commercial zoning. As we heard from the owners, the, this existing site layout and the land uses that are associated with, with this property are not changing. And they do comply with the commercial development standards, which are listed on the planned submission sheet and are outlined here. It's probably too hard for anyone to read, but it does show a conformance with that, that standard. Lot two, which is the yellow shaded box, is twelve point two eight five acres. And that is being proposed for the planned unit development. And that'll, of course, be a, a part of the bulk part of our conversation tonight. This slide represents, comes directly from the submission. It's sheet C12 with a little bit of color added. This starts to focus on the standards that we are using for the PUD submission. And these standards are derived from the zoning ordinance, but also reflect the unique character that we're trying to shape and the, the unique site conditions that we're working with. Again, this is a compact mixed income development that's providing three hundred and sixty residential units across a variety of housing types, including townhouses, walk-up apartments, apartment elevator, a building with elevator, an elevator to access apartments, and the live-work units. And a portion of the residential units, as was described earlier by Trent, will be set aside for rent-restricted limits based on the area of median income. To support these residential units, we're looking at supporting it with a two thousand square foot restaurant and twelve thousand square feet of clubhouse and, and open space added on to that. And we'll talk more about the, the amenity and the open space and the layout in the, in the subsequent slides. The site in the building design, again, talking about this transect from north to south, is a transect that, that goes from commercial uses up to single-family across Donegan. The shaded colors here represent the different ranges in the building heights. So the buildings along Donegan, as we've heard, are limited to two stories with a maximum height of thirty feet measured from the finished grade along the face of the building, facing out to Donegan Road, to the highest point of the coping of a flat roof or the midpoint of a sloped roof. And we'll see this at the later, later part of the presentation. We have some views of, of what that, that scale and height will look like. We altered that definition from what is in the, the code to really address how we're measuring it as it relates to Donegan. We're not taking that measurement of those buildings from the, the finished grade of that, of those buildings, but actually from the, the grade at the, more or less the entrance to those units that face out to Donegan. And then the other buildings, the buildings closest to the mall and downhill from Donegan are limited to four stories. These are the blue buildings here and are not taller than fifty-three feet. This, this measurement is measured from the finished grade of those buildings to the highest point of the coping of a flat roof for the midpoint of the sloped roof. This measurement can be a little deceiving as the finished grade is, is on the south side of these buildings and on the lowest lowest point of the, of the building. If you were to stand on the north side of these buildings, these buildings would be perceived shorter in height. For example, this, the buildings, which is hard to tell the, the name, but these are the C buildings. If you're looking at those buildings from this amenity space in the center, they would be perceived as a three-story building and not necessarily a four-story building. It's, it's the walkout basement, garage, storage area on the, on the low side that adds the extra height to, to the definition of our building heights for those buildings. Throughout the, the development, and we'll talk more about this later on, we're providing a variety of parking opportunities, including integral parking within the buildings, and I'll point that out in the presentation. We also have some freestanding garages, a lot of off-street surface parking, as well as we're introducing with, with improvements to Storm King and Donegan Road, on-street parking at the edge of new on-street parking at the edge of the site. Overall, the off-street and garage parking is generally located internal to site. It's really only the on-street parking on Storm King and Donegan that would be exterior to the site. In total, the, the parking provides over six hundred, it provides six hundred and twenty-five spaces to support the required six hundred and fourteen spaces needed to, to support the land uses being proposed. And again, we'll, as we move through the presentation, we'll, we'll look more at some of the proposed design standards. And as Trent noted earlier, any of the specific standards not necessarily addressed in the submission, particularly on sheet C12, which is on the screen here, will be subject to the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code. So moving to the, the framework plan, this is a diagram that helped us kind of think about the connections of the buildings internally, but also how, how the site relates to the context around it. Again, I'm going to refer back to that transition from the lower scale on the north side of Donegan to the, to the south side. You can see there's a transition in the, in the scale of the building footprints going from the townhouses and the, the two two-story multifamily buildings that flank either side of, of Chapparal Circle here. And one of the, the big driving forces in the concept was to help, to create a, a site development plan that would allow public views into the site and towards Red Mountain, which is that, that mountain in the, the view on the first slide that we had. We, we, what we can't see on this image and to the top of the image here, Chapparal Circle is, is teeing into Donegan. We're proposing that it extends into the site and down, down into the site. And it's terminated by the clubhouse. And the clubhouse, in this case, is a tall, one-story building read from the north side, and it transitions in grade to a two-story read on the south side. And so having that, that, that smaller building located at the terminus of Chapparal allows the view down Chapparal to have kind of an expansive view across the site, across our open space and towards the mountains on the other side of the Colorado River. What's not shown kind of behind the framework plan label here is Pandorosa Circle, which also tees into Donegan right about here. We, we've purposefully left a gap in between those townhouses to provide open space both for the development, but kind of an open space gap that allows that street to have a view from the high point of Donegan over the site and towards the, the south, looking towards the mountains in the distance. And we'll have some images of that later on. We are providing kind of a, a context-sensitive, expanded landscape along the public right-of-ways along Donegan and Storm King. The setback from the, the right-of-way to the building faces is twenty-five from Donegan to the face of the, the residential buildings and twenty along Storm King Road to the, the face of Building D. We're providing, on both of these streets, we're providing on-street parking, as I said earlier, but we are also expanding the pedestrian and bike infrastructure along those roads. And we have a section that can help describe that on the, on the next slide or in a few slides from here. Similar to the public roads, we're, we're allowed, we're treating the northern edge of Circle Drive as, as a kind of a tighter, more commercial-oriented streetscape that has, that terminates on a open space, open space at the, the northwest corner of Building C1 here, which ties into a pedestrian walkway that brings you into the site and crosses over that kind of central amenity space south of the clubhouse. And again, where we're buffering, where, where we're edged against neighboring properties, we're, we're providing a buffered landscape treatment along those edges. And we have two site sections, which we can show you on how we're conceptually thinking about that. The, this slide represents the illustrative landscape plan. This really starts to demonstrate our compliance with the open space standards. This is providing the twenty percent, twenty percent of the development site for common open space, as well as twenty percent of the development site for landscaped areas. And the twenty percent of the development area roughly works out to about two point five acres of common open space and, and landscaped, landscaped areas. This strategy that you see here also incorporates plant material, streetscape, and parking area landscape requirements, as described in the Glenwood Springs Development Code. This is sort of, this is a test to see how we're doing to satisfy that, and I think we did fairly well. For more details, you can see this on sheet, the sheet LA3O for the quantities of plants distributed on the site. Of course, the final plant quantities and design will be finalized at the time of the major site and architectural plan review. Here we have three, three site sections. The, the larger section on the left represents the kind of illustrative view of Donegan Road, taking into account a four-foot bike lane with a two-foot kind of door zone adjacent to the, the, the parallel parking. And then on the opposite side of the car, we have a five-foot tree zone and a six-foot sidewalk. And that six-foot sidewalk is located within an eight-foot pedestrian easement between this line and that line. And you can see from, from the right-of-way line over to the face of the building is another twenty-five feet of front yard space with opportunities to, to be landscaped. And when we look at some of the perspective views, you'll see what, what that treatment can be. The two smaller sections reflect our strategies for incorporating landscape and screening along adjacent properties. The top one is the, the, is the section along the eastern property, looking at using that utility easement and swale to create a lush landscaping edge and then relying on a screening device, the, the fence to, to help provide further buffering along the properties. And likewise, along the south side, which is the lower section, providing that landscape treatment and screening between our property and the mall site. But keeping the landscape low, of course, this is the, that section is taken at the lowest point of the site. So a lot of the dwelling units will actually have views over that and towards the, uh, towards the, the mountains on the opposite side of the river. So again, here is the concept plan. I wanted to use this diagram to help illustrate the, the variety of building types. We have six building types on the plan. I'll start with Building A1 and A2. They're kind of sister buildings that flank Chapparal Circle, leading you down to the clubhouse. Again, these are designed as a two-story building along Donegan Road. We have grade that comes down to the backside where we have integral parking, which is kind of dashed in the zone here of those two buildings, where cars can slip in underneath of that building, as well as providing additional basement level space for residential storage. Again, the, the clubhouse here is, is the blue building. Again, it has that, that, that tall, one and a half story read as you come in from Donegan Road, but it's transitions to a two-story building, looking out over the lawn, the pool space and plaza spaces that are on the ground in between all of these buildings, which have great views back into that, that shared common space. Mind you, the deck coming off the clubhouse sits up a floor over those amenity spaces. And again, we pulled the building, Building C1 and C2. We pushed them aside to allow for views over the valley, over the mall, towards, towards the, the mountains in the distance. The B buildings are three-story walk-up buildings. They, again, they're terraced up from the, the lawn space, so they'll have balconies and entrances that look out over that open space. And then convenient parking is located on the back side. So we're trying to create that, that open space that's well-contained by buildings and not intruded by parking spaces and vehicle movement. The two C buildings, as I mentioned earlier, flank that, 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 that view out to the south. These are a three, they have a three-story read facing north. And then the garage, the integral garage is on the, on the south and the low side are, are on, on adjacent to the convenient parking on the south side of those buildings. I'm going to jump back up to Donegan. Again, we had, we talked about the A buildings. And then as we move towards the west, we introduced a series of townhouses, rental townhouses. They too have a two-story read and a walkout basement condition with parking. They too have a two-story read and a walkout basement condition with parking and tandem parking on the back. Again, having perhaps the amenity deck for that, that unit over top of the parking space and pad below on the south side. And then as we transition down Storm King, down the hill to, to Building D, this is the, the largest of the buildings, and it sits approximately 17 to 20 feet below Donegan's, Donegan Road up here. This building also contains the live-work units, which are being employed along the base of this building. We'll show you an image of what that looks like to help create that kind of commercial edge along Center Drive and really activate that, that seam between the existing office buildings on our site. So with that said, I'm going to go back one slide. I'm going to take you on a kind of a visual tour, just to wrap up kind of this, this summary of some of the, the regulations. We're going to start from the northwest corner. We're going to work our way over to Chapparal Circle, looking down to the clubhouse. And then ultimately get, we'll move to a view from Storm King, looking back across the site, and then taking, and then come in off of Center Drive, looking into the site, particularly looking at, at Building D. So with that said, let's kind of begin that, that, that journey. So this is the northwest corner of, of our site, looking, looking to the south and east. These are this, what you see in the foreground is the multifamily building, the walk-up building. Again, we're, we're applying a lot of massing and material changes to create, kind of break down the scale of that building and to treat it as if it reads like the townhouses that you can't see in this view, but would be off to the far right. And to bring that scale down into something that's more compatible with the single family across Donegan Road. You can see here the, the 25-foot setback, the opportunity for planting in that buffer zone, allowing some of the balconies and units that kind of spill out and enjoy that space, but also have that, that new pedestrian sidewalk in the front of that, front of, along Donegan, experience that, that really wonderful landscape opportunity that we're providing. Again, introducing street trees, shade trees, the, the bike lane heading, I'm sorry, heading east on Donegan there, and then the new supply of on-street parking along the north side of this development. As we move further west, we, we come to the intersection of Chapparal Circle. You can see, we, we, we see this as a ceremonial entrance into the site, treating it with kind of a landscape median in Chapparal Drive with signage and landscape that brings your eye down into the site. This is the, in, in between here, you can see the, that, that tall, one-story, one-and-a-half-story kind of clubhouse that sits kind of at the center of our community. And again, because the grades are dropping down and we're, and we're, this allows us to look at those B buildings, which are the three-story buildings, that, you know, their scale and massing that flank the open space behind the clubhouse from Donegan are really not greater than the scale of the two-story buildings on Donegan. So again, we're using the building heights strategically to, strategically to work with the grades and scale this appropriately to the context. As we move around the corner, this is Storm King and Donegan. This, these are the townhouse units. Again, further modulating down, breaking the scale down. And again, Storm King transitions down the hill, and this is the, 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 the four-story building to the south one, Center, Center Drive. And you can see again, because of that gray transition, the scale of that building is not as, is not overwhelming the two-story buildings on Donegan. And then the final view here before I hand it over to Sopris is looking back at the Center Drive building. Again, we're treating this in a more downtown kind of feel as it relates to the commercial uses across Center Drive. And again, here you can see the opportunity for the live-work units. There was a question about what the live-work units are. Live-work units are essentially a, a unit, a deep unit with one bedroom or a studio type of living space. But along the street, it's a, it's a commercial opportunity for that tenant to either set up a professional office or a home occupation space there. And with that, I'm going to pass the baton to Yancy to talk about traffic.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Can everyone hear me all right? Okay, Yancy Nico with Sopris Engineering. And what I want to do is do a brief overview of the traffic and infrastructure of what's existing and what's kind of proposed at this level with this application. So what we have here is, is there is seven intersections that the traffic study looked at and analyzed. And so if you start over on the eastern side, you have Highway 6 and Storm King intersection, and then moving north along Storm King, the Center Drive and Storm King was analyzed, and then Storm King and Donegan was analyzed, and then the Chapparal Circle, which is our new primary entrance on the north, was analyzed. And then the Donegan-Melray Road was looked at. And then the north leg of the I-70 roundabout where Melray Road comes into Highway 6. And then approximately a mile and a quarter east, the Donegan-Hiway 6 intersection was also analyzed. And we, the traffic engineer worked closely with the staff, tried to come up with what we felt was the appropriate distribution of cars and et cetera with, with that analysis. And out of that analysis, there's proposed improvements at two of those intersections. At the Storm King Center Drive, it's recommended that becomes a four-way stop to better serve the traffic. And then over at the Highway 6 and Donegan Road, that's a mile and a quarter away, we're proposing that a left turn out of Donegan onto Highway 6, a acceleration lane be added, and then eastbound on Highway 6, left turn into Donegan, a left turn deceleration lane be added at that intersection. And then, Matthew, if you want to go to the next slide. And so this shows what the intersections are with the development. So Center Drive is, as you saw in the site plan, with the four, new four-way stop would come into the project. And then over Chapparal Circle would just be a stop sign, T-intersection at that location. And, and then when the Demos has sold the parcel to the mall, one of the requirements is the mall was supposed to give an access to this parcel, future connection. And so we're utilizing that as an emergency access to either evacuate or emergency vehicles to, to get to the site or even the community that can, could come out through this access across the mall and get to Highway 6. In the future, if the mall redeveloped where there could be actually a defined road connection, this site plan would actually be able to allow that to happen, not only just where we show up, but with minor modifications along that south line of our development. Anywhere there, a connection could be done, but with the way the mall parking lot is, it would not make sense to have the day-to-day traffic going out across this mall. It just wouldn't function correctly. So right now, it's an emergency access only. Next slide, Matthew. This slide kind of shows, everything in yellow is the existing sidewalks that generally surround the parcel. And then the cyan, which is just a little bit up in the right-hand corner, is existing bike lanes that the city did with the development of, of Donegan over to Soccer Field Road. Next slide, Matthew. So this shows what, working with the staff and understanding of pedestrian improvements off-site and, and in front of our project. And so the blue represents where we can add and implement bike lanes along Storm King Road and Donegan. And I think through what Matthew showed and a little bit of Trent, right now, those are proposed at four-foot bike lanes. And the red represents additional sidewalk that would be connected. And so you can see we're at this time proposing a connection to where Donegan improvements would be all the way over to Storm King Road and then down Storm King Road. There's a section across at the two, at the charter school, just because the way that's developed and the impacts, that's beyond what we could propose because there's bus parking and et cetera. But also consider that that travel southbound is at about 5% or 6%. So a bicycle could just run in the travel lane. And then when they get to Center Drive, as the street gets flatter, they would have a bike lane. So we felt that it is acceptable for that short distance. And of course, we're open, if the street section across the way ever got redeveloped, it could be incorporated. And then, next slide, Matthew. And so you heard from John Demos that some of the history is the mall was required to extend infrastructure to serve this parcel when it developed. And so what you see here is in blue is the water mains that exist. And there's also some up in Donegan Road. And the green is the existing sewer that was extended from the West Sanitation District to serve this parcel. And the darker is the storm drain system that was stubbed in to serve this parcel. So that's kind of unique with my almost 30 years of experience. When you have projects like this, we usually have to bring water, sewer, storm, electric telephone, cable, gas, all those from some distance or down certain public roads. And this site also has fiber optics, telephone, electric, gas, and everything that's along its eastern boundary, its southern boundary, and also already serves the existing commercial in this area. So that's kind of what I wanted to do is overlay of why the existing infrastructure is adequate to serve this parcel without a large extensions. And then I'll try to maybe answer some of the questions I think I heard from some of the commissioners. For instance, the slope from Donegan Road to the pavement at the north side of the mall is an average of about 5%, 5.5%. But it drops more severe off of Donegan because Donegan was a fail situation when it was built years and years ago. That's why I feel the architects done a really good job of using the buildings to fit the actual site to minimize that. The storm drain system approach is, is, it's a little bit of a challenge. As Terry kind of mentioned, even south of us, but even north of us, is development happened in West Glenwood in a county, there wasn't any infrastructure storm drain done. So it just kind of migrates to this site. So what we've done is looked at it very extensively and figured out how to implement some storm drain systems in Donegan Road, collect that, route it through the development, but collect all of the onsite system, storm system, and treat it and keep it to the existing flow or less, so we don't not impact or adversely increase any of the concerns that CDOT has on Highway 6. So that's all been kind of analyzed and is part of our approach, which you will see in more detail if we come in with a major site plan development. And I tried to take quite a few notes, and I'm assuming we'll have a chance to come back and try to answer some of those other technical questions in more detail to where we can get better prepared. But with that, I'll be prepared to answer any other specific questions I can answer tonight also.
Does that conclude your presentation? That was it?
That's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks, everybody, for their information and expertise in all this. So I'll bring it back to the commission and we'll do questions to the applicant. Please raise your hand. And we'll start with Commissioner Shaker, please. You're muted.
I think this would probably be for Mr. Rosenberg. In all your developments, I understand, I understand you'll be managed, you'll have a management company doing the rental and handling all that, I assume you can answer. But one of the, one of the things that is grossly missing from Glenwood's housing market, one of several things, and has been identified through housing workshops and in our, in our comp plan, is tremendous shortage of deeded housing, of owner-occupied housing. And almost all the developments we've had recently have been a plethora of rental units. I don't know that it's ever possible with your logistics and your long-term plan, but is there any way you could consider carving out, say, townhomes to be deeded? Because we really do not have a diversity of housing here recently in Glenwood. And that would, that would include yours being all rental. So my question is, is there any way to carve out any deeded housing in this project?
Um, can you hear me? Okay, this is Barry.
Yep, I can, Barry. Thank you.
It's, it is not part of our strategy of what we do. We do rental. Again, we kind of do it, we like to be long-term holders. I do think that there is a trend, more you're seeing it, of people renting versus owning today. And I also think one of the things that would potentially work against us is, is that the cost of construction and the cost of selling housing, one of the issues you do have in the community today is by the time you're done, you know, 2,500 square foot home is 600,000 or more, a new home today, which becomes very unattainable. So part of what we're hoping that we're bringing is not only affordable component, but the attainable component. And again, liking to own, control, and manage our properties at a Class A position, which is what we do. And again, thinking long-term, it typically does not fit what we, what we look to and how, what we do as a company.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Sumner. Any additional questions to the team? And let's see, Commissioner Shaver first.
Thanks. As a point of reference, do the fence lines that exist on the north and west, or do they represent the property line and/or the right-of-ways for Donegan and, and Storm King?
This is Yancy. They're probably within one or two feet of where the right-of-way is, those fence lines are. So they're pretty close to the right-of-way.
Okay. And then as a, an architectural question, on the northeast corner, the, those, it looks like there's gables that the roof extends from to create the highest peak of those roofs on, what would that be, Building B1, B2, I think? Or is it A1 and A2 in that corner? Is, is that just an architectural feature or is there living space up there? And what are the, from Donegan or from that side, what is the elevation to that center line or the center point of that pitch? Looks like there's a gable vent in, in that area.
Yeah, this is not a habitable space. Up there, it's more of an architectural expression, and the, the measurement is to the midpoint of, of the roof from, from the kind of finish floor out here at facing out to Donegan. And that's, I want to say, I've got to look at my notes. I don't want to misquote myself, but about 30-some feet.
Thirty-some?
I think, I think it's 32. Let me just find my note there. I had it all teed up, and I don't want to misquote myself here, so hold on, please.
Sure.
30, 30 feet. Thirty, thirty feet.
Thirty feet. And I think down at the um. Would be the northwest corner, there's uh. Those buildings have a little different, there's, looks like what the two gables are not projected up like this. In the, the, whatever those buildings would be. The other townhomes.
Are you referring to, to this view?
Yeah, to the, okay, right. So the, the midpoint on those would be what?
Thirty feet as well.
Same, same.
Approximately the same. I, they might be a little shorter than the multifamily. Again, we. For the standards, we wanted to provide a kind of a simple ma- uh, metric. And I, you know, our, our point was the, the worst condition along Donigan, which would be this point. So I would. I would say this is slightly lower than thirty feet.
Okay. And then um. I guess a question for Yancy in, in terms of um, stormwater retention is that. Are there bioswells? Is that what you're intending to do? For some of that or? What are you expecting?
Um, we'll have some of that. There'll be a combination of probably. Um, filter systems, bioswells. Um, but majority of it because of the steepness of the site and, and the amount of water coming from the north. They'll be like what we call a barracuda type storm drain system. So it'd be a. Manufactured way to treat the solids through a system. That you use on the actual storm drain pipes.
So you capture solids and then remove those periodically as a maintenance procedure?
Correct, through physically removing them and then there's filters. That once the filter gets collects particles, you just change out the filters.
Okay, there's just, as a point of curiosity, um. The monastery school currently has a play area on. This twelve and a quarter acres is, I think. Um, which would be lost. Do they, will they be able to maintain themselves as a? As a monastery school without that property or without that outdoor space?
Um, Matt, can you go to a site plan? So I might be able to answer that. So. Yeah, that, so. Talking to John and Floyd, they envisioning that kind of triangle shape that's east of their building. That's just got some outdoor storage that they're thinking of relocating the monastery school outdoor at play area to that area. So it won't be lost, it just could be relocated.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Waller, please.
Um, one, one thing to me that's a little confusing, and I think I kind of understand it, but is. Is when you talk about the setback from Donigan. Um, you know, there's the existing road and then there's. Where people pull off, then there's the fence. I mean, there's all this stuff. So what I kind of hear is when I, and maybe be good to put up that. That um, cross section that showed the sidewalk and all of that. But what I heard you say was it's twenty-five feet. Back from the sidewalk to the building. And I, and, and is that, is that correct? I guess I would like to look at that. Yeah, exactly that.
So it's the, uh, the right of way line is located here and it's twenty-five feet from the right of way. To the face of the building. So in that twenty-five feet would be. The eight-foot pedestrian easement. Which houses the six-foot sidewalk.
Okay, so it's. So, so the twenty-five feet is, is, is from the curb? The edge of the curb?
It's, no, it's in front of the twenty-five feet is from the property line, which is approximately. Four and some feet from the face of the curb.
Okay. And, 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 and if you kind of keep that up to kind of give me a perspective from. Existing Donigan pavement, is that? I mean, is that split that vehicle that's there or, you know, I mean, to give me an idea from?
Yancy, would you be able to?
So Pete, the Donigan Road exists right around twenty to twenty-one feet wide. And so the Donican lane that we're doing is the same what the town built, so it's eleven feet. So the existing pavement would be about where that bicycle is shown in this graphic.
Right, okay, yeah.
And the fence, as you know, there's a kind of a gravelly area and that drops off really steep and then the fence is below, which is about where that property line is.
Right. So, so from the existing pavement, you're probably. I don't know, thirty-five feet. From there to the, I mean, just to kind of help me understand where that first building is.
That's about right.
Six, eight, fourteen. Nineteen, it'd be almost forty-two feet.
Forty-two feet, yeah. Okay. So, and then, and then I'm kind of looking at the grade, so you got to slope away from the building so that, so it's. So it's dropping down a little bit is that Chaparral roads coming off that curb. But anyway, that's, okay, that kind of helps me with that. Um, is, is the Glenwood Business Center, I'm assuming the answer is they're grandfathered in, so they're not part of the. Twenty percent of the um. Of the, of the open space. Is that right? Cause, cause the, the twenty percent is only for the new development.
No, that's not correct, Pete. They will have twenty percent within their own lot that exist. They're, they're actually a little over twenty percent as they exist on their own lot, so.
They exist already and, and that was, yeah, George had a great question on that playground thing there, so.
So when Trent said twenty percent of the twelve acres, that's within lot two of the housing development. But the, the piece that John and Floyd are going to keep is going to be to have its own twenty percent.
Okay, um. And then on, on, Yancy, you put up one plant, one site plan that showed. The bike, the bike trail and the sidewalk and it showed the um. The bike path connecting all the way. All the way up Donigan. And I know I've ridden up there. Before and, and um, so, so does that, so, so that, that, that bike path that goes along Donigan, you guys are doing that bike path. Past your development and the sidewalk. All the way to connect to the existing. Improvement that was done by whomever, I think the city did those improvements. Three or four years ago, is that?
That's correct, Pete. Working with your staff, it didn't make sense for us to do just in front of Donigan and then. Put the bikes and pedestrians back out into Donigan Road to get back over there to Soccer Field Road. So. You know, I, I did some site investigation and, and, and I don't know if you saw the sections within our application, we actually will have to put some wall. Along those properties because they're well, well down below. Donigan to actually fit those improvements in.
Right. And then it looks like the sidewalk right there from Mel Ray or not from Mel Ray, but from your property going across Melway till it hits. That school road or whatever it is, that that just abuts right to the road. There's not like a greenbelt. Between that one, that area there just.
No, it'd be similar because if you remember, the sidewalk on Donigan east of this is all attached to the curb. So it's just an extension and just, I think probably because there was Don adequate right of way.
Right.
And, and we can resolve that in front of our development because, because we have the ability to do our pedestrian easement.
Okay.
Or, or I meant, yeah, for the sidewalk.
Okay, and then the one other question I kind of have on the um. On your traffic study. Um, you know, you really don't show anything on, on Mel Ray, so I'm, I'm assuming your assumption is that. For people to enter into um. To, to enter into Chaparral, which seems like the residence for the townhomes and. Those apartments and, you know, I like how you have the, how you use the grades with parking underneath, that's pretty slick and um. But, but it seems like the traffic flow is going to, is going to come. I don't know, fifty percent of it will come up Mel Ray and fifty percent of the people will. You know, are you trying to make Mel Ray stay crappy so that people have to go up Storm King because it's pretty slick? I mean.
Well.
You know, you know what I mean, Yancy.
Well, yeah, and we did a distribution, so we do have a fair amount of our trips on Mel Ray Road because that's what the existing. Trips are kind of doing. The challenge with Mel Ray is, is, is it was platted. If I recall, clear back in the seventies. And it's a easement that's platted on to those lots and it's only has thirty feet. So, in fact. The year I moved to Glenwood in nineteen eighty-nine, I helped the county invert that street because all those houses. Flooded every time it rained because the street was higher than the, the houses. And so we inverted the street and put a storm drain system in to solve that problem, but we could barely fit that in because they, they don't. Either the county or somebody has to get a larger easement to do much improvements.
Right.
So that, it's tightening, it's tight with hedges and mailboxes and everything else, so it, it kind of has its own traffic calming. People drive fairly slow there, but far as like Trent nailed it, put, to put pedestrian sidewalks and trails, so. What we really tried to focus on is, is, is how can we get from both schools? And where the kids are walking on Donigan and so our counts and what we heard from staff was. Is the Donican connection was probably critical in the Storm King. And then Soccer Field has a connection and of course the trail that was put in nineteen eighty-nine and ninety by the city from West Glenwood all the way to downtown along highway six. So we have, have a way for the pedestrians and bicyclers to get through here without trying to. Um, I don't know, to me, it's almost like you'd have to take a taking from those residents along Mel Ray Road to solve those, those two issues.
Right.
Not saying that there's not some. Uh, vehicle improvements you could do on Mel Ray Road, but.
Well, I, I guess my, my concern with Mel Ray is, I mean, it's own, it's its own traffic calming thing because you darch that. That stinking um, drain pan in the middle, that concrete drain pan trying to drive up and down it, so it's um. You know, it's, it, it, it seems kind of like a safety hazard if there's a lot of people driving up and down there, I guess.
That was my plan in nineteen eighty-nine, Pete.
Yeah, it's a couple of years since then, Yancy.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zipperly, please.
Thanks, um, my first question is about the measuring of roof heights. Uh, you mentioned the fifty-three foot height would be either measured to the parapet or the midpoint of the roof. I believe those were building B. The ones towards the mall. Is that a pitched roof scenario or is it a flat roof scenario? Because obviously if it's pitched and the midpoint is fifty-three. We could be a lot taller. Is it flat?
The, the, the one building at the corner of uh, center drive is a flat roof, so we're measuring to the uh, the top of that flat roof. Um, the other two buildings internal to the site along this, this, the edge of the mall, south of the common space. Those are, this will have similar uh, roof treatments as the other buildings, so it'll be a mix of flat and, and um. And pitched as well.
Yeah, back to what Commissioner Shaver said, I, I, I'm a little apprehensive about a rather useless. Tall space blocking, especially the neighbor's view. Uh, just to provide some uh, form differentiation, so. Uh, I mean, if I lived across the street and had a choice, I would rather see more of the small zigzags as opposed to this. Uh, gable that reaches up and really doesn't um, have a function. Some of my other questions were about parking. You said that there are six hundred and twenty-five spaces. Are those all provided internal to the lot or are you counting the on-street parking spaces as well?
We, we are counting everything inside the lot as well as the new, the uh, new proposed on-street parking.
Because.
Adjacent, adjacent to the site.
And we do know that most of that on-street parking is already being used by neighbors and by the teachers at the school. Um, I don't have actually account for how many spots there are over there, but it seems as though. If you need to add additional spots and those are already being utilized as parking spaces, then you haven't essentially added them other than perhaps striping them and providing. The door zone for the proposed bike path. Um, are the circulation routes inside the site proposed to be two-way or one-way?
Then I believe they're all two-way.
So if you pull into one of these tuck-under garages and you go to back out of your garage at, you know, eight-thirty rush hour. Um. Almost, well, probably a third of this development will be uh, waiting for you to get out of your garage and. Pull your car forward. I see this will also happen with the, you know, the, the nose-in spaces that are also lining these roadways. So the roadways don't appear to be wide enough. To allow you to back out and then pull into traffic. You will be blocking the traffic route, right?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I mean, I guess the internal street is more akin to uh, a parking. Space, um. You know, there's adequate twenty-four feet of width, so pulling out, you have enough clearance to stay within your lane, directional lane. Um, and hopefully. Hopefully people are not moving that fast through, through uh, kind of the, the service lane there. You know, it's, the, 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 the street language is distinctively different. Uh, on the outside where we have the, the two public streets and then center drive coming in. And then it really trans- transitions more into uh, your more traditional parking field. Where, where speeds would be just uh. Slower uh, and more cautious as you move through that field.
Right.
And if I could may add to that is, is we want to minimize the amount of asphalt. Um, but have adequate so it still functions. So like Matthew said, the twenty-four foot is very common to be able to back out and not block both lanes and be able to get in. Obviously, if it was wider, it'd be more beneficial to the vehicle, but. It's not desirable for other reasons for heat zone and tree and landscaping.
Yeah, that, that is clear and this definitely is reading like a parking lot. Um, but if we're assuming there's twelve hundred cars, they essentially are internal roads. Um. And I suppose, uh, you know, if, if this proceeds to. Uh, PUD and later reviews, we would be looking at, you know, traffic, safety, bicycle circulation inside. Um, of this area, you know, riding your bike along and somebody's backing out of their garage, it, it could be an issue. Um, and then the Mel Ray Road issue, and I, I understand Mel Ray is a county road. If the city takes on this property and potentially what we're saying twelve hundred cars. I, I do know that they're going to go down Mel Ray Road and if it is only a thirty-foot wide. Easement, there's really no way to add uh, sidewalks and bike lanes there. Um, and it's not city jurisdiction, so then would the county try and pull some eminent domain on Mel Ray residents in order to. Make this road actually meet um, the requirements?
Well, like I tried to explain is, is that would be up to the, the city and in the county, the city owns the southern half of Mel Ray and the county owns the northern half as it exists. And, and, and as an applicant, we can't condemn or. Get additional easement to do improvements, so that would have to be something between the county. And those residents if it's desired and, and, and that's why we were trying to really focus that maybe it's not a good appro- appropriate place to try to invite pedestrians and bike lane people in there from our project. And make it more vehicle and we did all the other connections for the bike lanes and pedestrians all the way around. I think it'd be a lot more desirable to ride your bike or walk on Donigan than highway six, for example. And have all the connections to the school, uh, because you have Soccer Field Road and you've got Storm King Road and you've got Donigan. Uh, not saying if, if, if there was additional right of way acquired, it couldn't be done, but it's not in our purview as an applicant, as a private developer.
But say you work at the Meadows and you're trying to not take your car. I mean, you're going to want to go Mel Ray, uh, is there? I, I understand there's an access easement from the twelve-point whatever acre parcel across the mall property. But would pedestrians and bicycles be legitimately allowed to use the mall parking lot to traverse to get over to say the public bus stop?
Um, yes, the way the easement's written is we have access from our parcel to the south through an easement. And then the amended plat for the mall dedicated a public access all the way around the mall for all the public to use. So. I believe from a standpoint, if one wants to walk a bike across the mall. So I believe from a standpoint, if one wants to walk a bike across the mall or go to the mall, they wouldn't have to go out and avoid it. They could actually do that.
Okay, because I do see that as quite a logical place for pedestrians and bicycles to, to get to where they're going. Um, uh, especially in light of the poor quality of, of Melray. Um, regarding the live-work areas, uh, the, um, the rendering that shows the southern elevation of that along Center Drive doesn't seem to provide any parking, uh, but that is sort of implied that's where the storefronts are. So, I mean, if their storefronts are, you know, professional offices or whatever. Uh, from what I understand in the traffic report, the live-work is not required nearly as many spaces. But I'm wondering if you're trying to attract customers or clients, what do we do with those people?
Uh, we, we do have, uh, on-street parking directly in front of those units. So there is parallel parking along the whole front dish of Center Drive.
It did, it just didn't show in the rendering.
There's a car, it's not well, it's, you know, it's not like in your face in the foreground. But it, we do show kind of a parked car just off to the edge.
Oh, okay. I thought that was maybe on Center Drive.
Then it is Center Drive. It's on-street parking on Center Drive.
Okay, parallel parking alongside.
Correct.
Is there a bike path, um, along there?
There's a sidewalk, it'll be along the north side, yeah.
Okay, so just a sidewalk, not a bike path connecting to the path that leaves from Center Drive and goes south to Highway six?
Correct. I think we, you know, I think the treatment of sidewalks from the, from the residential building to the public right-of-way uh, is, is sort of like that transition where you would, in theory, walk your bike to get to the bike lane from that, from that unit.
In theory, yeah.
And, and there's one other thing I wanted to clarify, a comment you had earlier. You talked about that there's existing parking along Storm King where we're putting parallel or along Donigan. And I don't believe that's the case because along Donigan, it drops off very severe. In fact, there's just barely enough room for somebody to walk along that gravel. They're almost walking the pavement. So all of those additional parking spaces that we're putting on Storm King and Donigan, none of those exist. And we realize that those will be able to be used by teachers or the community because they're going to be public parking. And our thought is, is those would be probably our guest parking that would be shared with teachers and et cetera. And so people coming over in the evening or whatever could use those. But the teachers and people that's there during the day, so those would be more like a shared parking. So that's, that's one of the reasons we're proposing those. Because they, they aren't, wouldn't be internally. So those will be all additional parking that would be available for the public that don't exist.
But you're counting them at your, in your parking requirements?
That's correct.
Your parking supply, correct.
Correct. And we would probably, the management would restrict that to just guest parking and not residents to use. As best as we can. Well, the teachers would be coming across from the street and so they'd be able to use them and we wouldn't be able to tell them no.
Okay. Okay, um, that answers the majority of my questions now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Carolyn. Um, any other questions at this point? To the applicant? I just have a, a quick one for Nancy, I think. The, uh, southern exit onto the mall parking lot. Which I was very disappointed to see a gate there. Um, you, you did say the way the parking lot at this point is configured, it doesn't make any sense. Um, it looks like it's a pretty straight shot to me to Highway six. What, what's the holdup?
Well, we typically would not have a development, um, without going out into a road. So you would have people that would not know where they're supposed to come across the parking lot. Especially when it's being snowplowed and, and controlled in winter conditions. People would just be going all over that parking lot to come into our, our development. And it doesn't make sense to me, the way the mall is operating and exists today. And, and, you know, the staff asked that question is, is so my thought would be is, is if the mall ever redeveloped and that was a desire, it would be kind of key to bring that in as a road that would serve the mall. But define it into this development and then that would be a benefit to this project in, in the traffic on Melray Road or, or Storm King. But I, I, I don't think it's appropriate to dump a development like this into a mall parking lot. Because people would go left, right, there would be no control, we can't stripe it, et cetera.
So you're saying because there is no definitive street between the south end there, all the way to Highway six at this point. Um, i- it doesn't make sense because you're right, if you, if you give them an outlet, they'll go wherever they want to go. But if you had a road connected to Highway six, it's a, it's a much more clear direction.
Correct. And what I was trying to point out is not trying to impact the mall's redevelopment, whatever's appropriate. It could be done in a lot of locations along our south boundary, depend on how the mall redeveloped and what those uses were. That if it was incorporated correctly, it, it could happen. And then the, then the emergency gate would go away at that time. Um, because we have the legal right to access there, but it just, the, the geometry of the mall just doesn't function very well. I, I think it would be a disaster.
So you're saying that, but you're saying that there is plenty of space between the eastern edge or the eastern end of the building of the mall to the property line to put a road in?
Yes, if, if the mall redeveloped.
And we'd have to wait for that?
Well, I think that would be a discussion between the city and the mall. If, if you could take their parking out or redevelop their site for a road. And then, of course, it, you wouldn't have a direct shot to Highway six. You'd have to turn back to the west and come out to the entrance because that would be in the back of that, uh, bus stop.
Right.
Long east boundary.
So there, there's a little bit of a struggle towards Highway six.
Yeah.
To get out, you'd have to, you'd have to follow the existing, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Again, you know what, one night, I hate to interrupt you, Marco, but a question I would have, just following up on Carolyn's thing, I thought it's a great idea. You know, I understand the vehicles, but what about pedestrians and bikes? You know, because, you know, Melray is, you know, uh, not a, not a safe place to go. So, and that's with the bus stop there and the bikes, if you're working at the Meadows, the stuff she said, I thought that was, I thought that would be really something good to pursue on the pedestrian side. And if, and if, um, you guys have an easement already or that was part of the original agreement. It seemed like that's not a city thing. It seems like that's between, um, you know, the new development in the mall. Anyway, that, I thought that's a great point.
I, I actually want to, because, uh, you know, I, I, I think, you know, as folks do, you see serviceable trails all over the place all the time. And I think regardless of what you do in the Melray right-of-way, you know, folks are going to travel from point A to point B. So they're going to go through the southern boundary of this property to the bus stop, to Highway six currently. And our anticipation is that we would have a much better improved pedestrian access and vehicle access. You know, through the mall site in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We'll see none. Okay, great. We'll move over to the, um, public comments. And we have quite a few people lined up here.
Marco, is there any chance we can do like five minutes before we go to public?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me, uh, let me call a five-minute recess. We'll be back about, I don't know, twenty-four, nine-twenty-four, something like that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, welcome back. I see all the commissioners are present. So welcome back to the second half of the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zone and Commission meeting for March twenty-third. Um, like I mentioned before the break, we're going to move over to the public comment aspect of the hearing. Um, I would like to say that if you have submitted your comments in writing, or I would prefer if you would summarize your comments, I have fifty-one people on the attendees list. I don't know if all of them want to speak, but if they do, this is going to take quite a while. Uh, so please summarize as much as you can, but we do want to hear your comments. So, uh, make, make your points, uh, concisely and, uh, we'll get through this. Also, Jen, if you could please run the three-minute timer or somebody. Uh, everybody will get three minutes to voice your comments. Um, I think there is some sort of a red flashing thing on the screen that your three minutes is up. If you go way past it, I'll give you a couple of seconds, a leeway, but if you go way past it, I will just, um, turn your, turn your speech off. So, uh, that said, let's start with Jen Swickel. And you're allowed to talk.
All right. Hi, thank you. Um, so I have a couple of issues. First of all, I, and I don't know if this is the time for it, but a couple of questions. Donigan Road is currently only twenty-one feet wide is what someone said. You're proposing to add to that twenty-one feet, one additional foot for the eleven feet per lane? Plus four feet of bike, plus another so many feet of parking. Um, where's that coming from? Are we taking easements out of everybody's properties on the other side of Donigan? Um, with regards to traffic and safety. Um, I know that, uh, Trent, you said that the traffic that was in West Glenwood wasn't even people trying to evacuate. But that West Glenwood area is the only place that the highway gets shut down if there is a fire in that South Canyon area. So you have the entire I seventy corridor feeding into that West Glenwood area. If that fire were to have blown up this summer, we would not have been able to get out. Because all of the people traveling down valley were already congesting all of the roads, turning them into a parking lot. There was a police officer that was called to the scene of a, a dispute with a vehicle not respecting somebody's property. And it took him over forty minutes to get there, um, because traffic would not move out of his way. Um, so in an evacuation situation, we have a major issue. Um, second of all, or third, I guess, I think it's incredibly irresponsible to think about building projects of this nature when we do not have the infrastructure within the city to support it. We do not have mental health facilities. Our healthcare facilities are over maxed. Our schools are already crowded. Especially once you get into middle school and high school where your choices, you have five and six elementary schools feeding into four, five with private schools, middle school, K three-eight programs feeding into one high school. Um, we have no movie theater, no, um, bike park, nothing for the youth. So they're turning to vaping, which is drastically increased. As a drug counselor, I can tell you that the number of students driving high in our DUI programs is immense. So we are taking away all of the activities that give them the benefit of mental health. We are not being appropriate in thinking about how can we build and fill more spaces? If we're not talking infrastructure, you're talking about the watershed that, um, you know, with the fires.
all of the roads, turning them into a parking lot. There was a police officer that was called to the scene of a dispute with a vehicle not respecting somebody's property, and it took him over forty minutes to get there. Because traffic would not move out of his way. So, in an evacuation situation, we have a major issue. Second of all, or third, I guess, I think it's incredibly irresponsible to think about building projects of this nature when we do not have the infrastructure within the city to support it. We do not have mental health facilities. Our healthcare facilities are overmaxed. Our schools are already crowded, especially once you get into middle school and high school where your choices, you have five and six elementary schools feeding into four, five with private schools, middle school, K-38 programs feeding into one high school. We have no movie theater, no bike park, nothing for the youth. So, they're turning to vaping, which drastically increased. As a drug counselor, I can tell you that the number of students driving high in our DUI programs is immense. So, we are taking away all of the activities that give them the benefit of mental health. We are not being appropriate in thinking about how can we build and fill more spaces if we're not talking infrastructure. You're talking about the watershed that, you know, with the fires and stuff, this project alone would add over three million new gallons of use per month, and that's only with three residents in the system. So, our infrastructure is not at all supporting this on any level. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just as a reminder for the people that called in on the phone line, I think it's star nine, if you want to talk. Also, please, and I forgot that, please state your name and not address, just state your name for the record. And we're gonna move to Fran and Lisa. You're allowed to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful. Lisa Oraz, and I live at fifty-one Chaparral Circle. Um, it's quite interesting, because we had a meeting with Barry last summer, and we inquired about the entrance of this development on Center Drive across from the school, and he said that he would be happy to move it on the south side of Mr. Demos's building into the back entrance of the mall parking lot, and that the Chaparral entrance would be only used as an emergency entrance and exit out of that development. And now, all of a sudden, it is the main entrance, which is exactly across the, from the end of our street, which I have issue with. Also, a little thing for Trent. I had called dispatch at four o'clock the day of the fire and asked them to shut down all entrances into West Glenwood so that we, as residents, could evacuate, and that fell on deaf ears. I'm also wondering how or why you don't have all six hundred and twenty-five of the parking spaces inside your development, because I don't believe that there should be parking on Donigan at all, at all. The traffic study that was done, I believe those traffic counters were up there for about twenty-four hours, might have been a little bit more. We'll have to ask Todd about that, but we're in the middle of COVID. You would not get a decent traffic study when people are still at home, working from home. This is a very busy area. You wouldn't think it, but it's very busy between the two schools. It is crazy. The parents that are going to Two Rivers Community, you know, are coming up Melray, like you said, are shooting down Donigan. It's very rare they come up Storm King. So, Melray, like Peter was saying, is a crazy, crazy little place to be, and I agree with Ms. Kipperly about the peak and George Shaver about the peak of those houses right in the end of Chaparral. Why can't they be like the townhouses that are on the other end towards Center Drive and Storm King Road? Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. And let's see, we are moving on to something that says four-twenty Melray Road CJ, and I'm not gonna attempt your last name, sorry. You're allowed to talk.
All right. Thank you. My name is Carlos Pinyea. I live at four-twenty Melray.
Thank you.
First wanna thank you guys, the Board of Zoning and Planning, for your time. I just have a couple of things that I want to highlight as one of you guys' tasks from your bullet points. Your main job being to evaluate impacts to the city, public health, safety, and welfare of, of the city and the surrounding neighborhood. I really think that there's a lot of different evaluations that really need to take place. For example, the traffic impact study, I don't think that they took in consideration the drop-offs and pickup times when the kids get out of school. Monday through Thursday, I believe that school is open, the charter school is open. You see a huge impact from six and twenty-four onto Storm King Road, whereas just bumper to bumper, because the kids are getting off work or off of school, or they're being dropped off early in the morning. Also, we have a police force shortage in this town where they have to subcontract to private security firms to keep up with the load. Logistically, we have a huge mess. We have a DMV office that is also in that corner. We have a driver's edge school that is also in that corner. Logistically, can the, the town support additional loads to our hospitals and schools? And I think you guys really have to open your eyes a little bit broader than normal, because this is such a huge development. I think we can progress in building, otherwise we would be living in caves. I know, I know progress is, is gonna come, but we really have to focus and reevaluate things and say, hey, look, you know, how are we going to patrol that area when we have a shortage of police officers? How are the ambulances gonna respond? How is the fire department gonna respond to a fire? Or, God forbid, that we have an active shooter drill or situation at the West Glenwood Mall. We have to really come up with the worst-case scenarios and say, hey, this is what we would do. That's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And let's see, so I got about fifty more attendees, but nobody raised their hands. You're gonna have to raise your hands if you called in on the phone. I think it's star nine, or if you're on Zoom. There's a little thing on the bottom that says raise hands. This is your chance to voice your comments. And we're gonna go to Lori Raymond, please. You're allowed to talk.
Okay, I, I unmuted myself. I have a business on West, in West Glenwood on Highway Six, just west of this, and I live on, between Donigan and Highway Six, east of Melray, and I've been there for eighteen years now, and I gotta say the confusion last summer when that fire, that little fire flared up. You know, we, I have a pet care business, and people were coming to try to get their pets, and there's a school, and people were trying to get their kids. People were coming from town frantically, trying to get to where they could pick up their kids or their pets, and then get out of the area, and there was no way. It was a, it was a total gridlock. So, I think that without dealing with the fact that we have this geographical and even geological issue of egress, it, it's just irresponsible to think about putting in another, you know, six hundred cars, residents, people who don't live and work in Glenwood, who would just need to get in their car and go. They would be coming from somewhere to get their children and their pets and then go, and it was a crazy, ridiculous situation and terrifying, because it came on the heels of the Paradise Fire in California. And it was fresh in my mind as I sat there on Donigan, not going anywhere, how those people were sort of roasted alive in their cars or on foot as they tried to flee from an area that was similarly impacted by lack of decent ways to escape. It just doesn't make sense for that to happen here until we deal with some of the needs to get away, because we are impacted all the time by weather, by accidents. That South Canyon area is bottleneck for all kinds of things. We've had, we've had little fires, we've had big fires. And, and if we keep bringing more people in, we're gonna have a situation that's tragic. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much. And let's see, we're moving on to a phone number ending in sixty-eight fifty-one, six-eight-five-one. You're allowed to talk. Please state your name for the record.
Hello. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hi, my name is Linda Holloway. I didn't expect to speak at all on this matter, but I have a couple of comments if you don't mind. First of all, does the city have to annex this property? I don't see any real benefit in doing that. I see a benefit for the applicants. They get city water and city sewer and city services. I don't see a benefit for the city as a commentator, and I'm sorry, I didn't note the name, said at the beginning that he and another fellow had looked at developments, and the benefit to cities of residential developments was zero. They mostly cost money and didn't contribute monetarily, at least, to, to a town. That and the fact that even though it appears that the off-street parking is sufficient to city code, city code is not sufficient. If the traffic analysis has said twenty-two hundred trips a day, that means basically eleven, if you're splitting it, eleven hundred morning and eleven hundred night, and there's only six hundred and forty-some parking spaces available. I apologize. Again, I didn't make notes, but that was combined off-street and on-street. That's obviously very insufficient. So, I don't, I don't see the benefit of annexing this property to the city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And we'll move on to Roseanne Shepherd. You're allowed to talk. You're still muted?
And I live on the north, I live on Melray Road, north of Donigan Road. I lived here in two thousand and two during the coal seam fire, and at that time, the traffic was horrible trying to evacuate. I was with my, with two of my children. One of my kids was not with me, but and we were on Donigan for about an hour and a half, not moving because of all of the other streets in West Glenwood coming before us and getting out. And I remember looking in the rearview mirror and seeing the fire just looming, like it was just gonna come and get us, and it was very scary, and I told the kids that if, if we actually saw flames near us, that we needed to be ready to get out of the car and run. So, since then, Glenwood has grown, West Glenwood has grown, and I think it's a real concern about wildfires in our particular area, and I just don't think this is a good idea to build a complex that would have as many people as are planned at the present time for public safety issues. Also, I'm, I'm really questioning the water system impact as well. I feel like all summer, I just heard that we were running out of water in, in Glenwood Springs, so I'm not sure how that jives with what was talked about tonight. I also feel like it's really arrogant for them to even propose a fifty-three-foot height limit. And so, let's see, what else? I had a couple of more things, but those are the main things. I really am concerned about the public safety and about being able to evacuate with the additional six hundred or so cars, perhaps coming from the new building in a safe and quick manner. Oh, one more thing. When was the traffic study done? I just really question that, as Lisa did too. It doesn't make sense to me that it would be done during COVID. I've been teaching at home, and I know my neighbors have also been at home, so I know that the traffic study could not have accounted for our travel in a normal year.
Okay, thank you. And we are moving on to Suzie. You're allowed to talk.
Hi, I just wanna, I thank you guys, first of all, for the commission, taking all your time to do all this.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Suzie Strauss. I live in West Glenwood on Creekside Court.
Thank you.
And to go along with Rose and the other people, the fires are such a definite impact, and last summer, or whenever we first talked to the developers, they didn't even know that we had wildfires or I-70 was an issue, and as my husband says, you know, it doesn't have to be a wildfire. Anytime the I-70 closes, West Glenwood becomes a cluster, and it's something I'd like to find out through the city. I don't know if you guys know, but supposedly, fire evacuation studies were supposed to be done full force after coal seam, because that one was, we felt heat from the fire when we were all rerouted back into the fire on I-70. So, I think everybody has stated my thoughts pretty clearly, and you guys are doing a great job, but traffic and infrastructure are the two biggies that have got to be considered. Thanks for your time again. Bye.
Thank you very much for your comments. And moving on to Dawn and Jenny Bassett. You're allowed to talk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We just wanna reiterate all the comments that we already heard.
Again, could please state your name for the record?
Oh, Dawn and Jenny Bassett.
Thank you.
Two ninety-eight Mon Roaster Drive here in West Glenwood. And like I said, I want to reiterate everybody's concerns already. The safety concerns and the traffic issues are huge. And then also the traffic on Storm King and Donigan when kids get out of school there at Two Rivers and the monastery school. And not only that, I mean, we live out here in the county for a reason. We, we love our, our small-town feel, and, you know, this would just add to making us feel like we're in Denver or something. But mainly, our concern is the safety issues.
From evacuating.
From evacuating, and, you know, when we had this last fire in the canyon and everything backed up here, my wife and I were on Donigan.
For three hours.
Three hours, from the tram to our house. Yeah, and we didn't, I mean, there was fights, and people were just being insane, and it just wasn't safe, and that's gotta be the main concern, is the safety. And, you know, I appreciate everybody's time and effort. I mean, obviously, these folks have really gone to great detail to develop this, but it's just not for us as far as the safety concerns and the way of life in Glenwood Springs. And I really appreciate you guys for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And let's see, next is Michael Hobob. Please, you're allowed to talk.
Hello, my name is Michael Hobon. I live on Ponderosa Circle, with my wife Anne. We are very long and happy residents of West Glenwood, and this project is very, very much a concern for all the residents of West Glenwood. This project would be like dropping an A-bomb right behind the mall, and it would destroy our way of life. We, I mean, geez, maybe it would be an improvement after that to move to Denver, where it's just absolutely nuts. So, I don't get the idea that we gotta fill every single square foot of open space, which we don't have much of. And developments all over the place, but especially this. This doesn't fit this area at all. It is just unbelievable. It's a no, no project, no-go project for us, and it's exactly what we don't want. So, please, I would suggest go back to Cincinnati or Denver. I mean, we really don't want this, so, thanks.
Thank you. And anybody else in the public like to come forward? Hang on a second here. Joanne, you're allowed to talk.
There we go. Sorry, Joanne Stanley. I live at 36 Donigan Road, at the far end of Donigan Road where it hits Mitchell Creek. We have lived here through Storm King, Coal Scene, and the, you know, the fires of last summer. It has been a nightmare trying to get out through all of those fires. And we have done nothing but increase density here and not given any thought on how we're gonna have exiting in a major event. Adding 600 or 300 more homes, which ends up being 600 or 700 people. That is just irresponsible of the city. I mean, the city's already trying to grapple with what's going on in South Glenwood, trying to get those folks a safe route out. Why would we design something that already is gonna have a problem to start with? That's my first point. My second point is the height of these buildings, that is such a disclaimer, not disclaimer, but false of what they're saying. Those buildings are gonna be at least 60 feet high at the top. They're gonna block everybody's view of everything. They need to be in keeping with the code that everybody else in the neighborhood has to go by. They're single-level homes. They're not even two-story homes. Single-level homes, and you need to get a variance to get to the second floor. Four stories is ridiculous. And to have two exits only in a development this size, that's problematic. The also problem is, if you're gonna have such a big development, you need to have the parking for everybody, all your residents, all your visitors, on-site. You can't take up city roads that you're gonna give a couple parking places to here or there, and maybe you'll get it, maybe you won't. It needs to be all on-site. I agree with everybody else with what they said. It's not a development that West Glenwood should even have to put up with. And with the water situation, we're on restrictions now. How are we gonna put up? I mean, somebody said, whoa, yeah, we can deal with all these extra people. We're on restrictions every other day you can water. I don't see any plausible way this is gonna work to the benefit of Glenwood Springs. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And we're moving to Thomas Clark. You're allowed to talk.
Hi, I am Tom Clark. I live near the top of Melray. One of the things I'd like to discuss again is the traffic and the use of Melray as it comes off the interstate. We see very, very frequently 18-wheelers that get lost even to the top of Melray. But the whole point of Melray there at the end as you hit Donigan is there's a big sign that says, "Go left" to get out of here, because you've gone the wrong way. I'm curious how all these plans, you're gonna look at Donigan now, if there is, you know, 5, 10, 15, 18-wheelers getting lost today, and how that's gonna work on the backstreet of Donigan in front of the complex and going back down Storm King. Because even now, with the bus area like it is, it feels like the top part of Storm King coming down towards Highway 6 is already crowded and putting side parking in there and other things, and more traffic and cars and parking and bicycles. And then you've got that 18-wheeler that's lost and trying to get out. Some of that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Let's move on to the Stevens. You're allowed to talk.
Hello, this is Annie Stevens. I live on Ponderosa Circle. Firstly, I appreciate all the questions that have come from the commissioners regarding the plans. One thing I'd like to ask is, would you commit to doing a fire safety and evacuation study? I think you've read it in all of the comments that have come into you, written comments, as well as those being shared tonight verbally, that our main concern is safety in a wildfire. And so I would like to request that you go ahead and do that study. I have other concerns to do with the fact that I'm sure if there's 360 units, which has gone down 50 units since the original plan, that there are approximately 1,100 to 1,200 tenants, and they're providing 625 parking spaces. Many, many people here in Glenwood have many more than one or two vehicles. Some have work vehicles, some have personal vehicles. And I think you're gonna turn West Glenwood into a parking lot as well as creating a traffic problem of catastrophic size. So I have big concerns with that, as well as other people. I do have concerns for that lower building that's at the 53-foot height. And I would like to make sure that definitely there's no building that would reach that height if you approve for this property or this development to go ahead. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And anybody else would like to raise their hand? I see 420 Melray. You already spoke, so I'm gonna wait in case there's somebody else. Usually, everybody gets once. Anybody else raising their hand for public comment? This is your chance. I'm not sure I'm gonna reopen public comment next week. I'm sorry, next month. So if you wanna comment on this, this would be it. And Todd, you're allowed to talk. You're muted at this point. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Todd Hurst, 547 Donigan Road, Glenwood Springs resident for a very long time. I don't really wanna make a lot of comments tonight, but I would just like to say that this development has a lot of work to do. If we're gonna actually develop this pasture in West Glenwood Springs, then we need to come together as a community and really go what we want to do as a community. So I'll keep my comments short, but I sent a letter in, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for speaking up. And we're going to Sheri. You're allowed to talk.
Hi, my name is Sheri Ternazi. I live in West Glenwood. I'm really disappointed the demos have decided to develop this area the way they have. In the very beginning, Todd said that there would be no problems with noise. I just can't believe we can add that many more people to West Glenwood and not have some noise impact. And also, another concern I have that nobody's mentioned is light pollution. A lot of the developments that have been recently developed over by the meadows and the Six Canyons, they look like friggin' starships out there at night. If you go look at them, there's lights everywhere. And I don't know if anybody's enforcing the light ordinance. So light pollution is one of my concerns, as well as all the other concerns people have mentioned tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Please raise your hand. And we got Carleen Clark. You're allowed to talk.
Hi, I'm Carleen Clark. I live at 570 Melray. I just really wanna reiterate the importance of doing a fire safety study for the area. And I did send in my comments and did reference the previous wildfire and safety study. And this area was rated at very high. And that was a long time ago. And I think probably the conditions are worse due to the increased density over time. And also with the traffic, I've been in this neighborhood since the Coal Seam Fire, well before that. And it's awful. I mean, it's just when you're kinda having that panic about trying to get out of the neighborhood, you're seeing fire, you don't know if you're getting out. We have one road, Highway 6. There's not lots of exits from Highway 6 onto I-70 for obvious reasons. But you're kinda trapped into this area. So I would really like to request that a serious study is done looking at how we can increase the safety of the current residents within West Glenwood before we consider expanding it and bringing more people in. Thank you. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Please raise your hand. Hang on just a second here. Okay, now we have repeaters. I wanna give everybody else a chance first. So I'm gonna hold on to you guys for a little bit, unless there's nobody else. Is there anybody else that wants to voice their comments? Please raise your hand. And while I wait a couple of seconds here, I also wanna mention that if you're not able to join the meeting tonight or voice your comments tonight, you can always send them to Trent. And Trent, help me with your email address, please. And you could also send them to City Hall over the next month. And then when we reconvene next month, we will have those comments in our record or in our packet. Trent, please.
My email address is my name, trent.hyatt@cogs.us. Of course, you could mail those to City Hall at 101 West 8th Street, as well as you could drop those in the utility boxes at City Hall.
That's the third option, exactly. Thank you, Trent, for the information. And if I see nobody new, then I will give 420 Melray Road another chance to talk, please. I think you're allowed to talk.
All right, thanks again, guys. I just wanted to mention one last thing that I forgot. Earlier, it was mentioned that the city would make zero revenue or a negative revenue from this development. My question to the zoning and planning board is, can you guys place a PIF on the developers to use for evacuation protocols and improvements? Because we keep coming back to the main concern is an evacuation plan that can save lives in case of inclement weather or in fire or any kind of disaster. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your additional comment. And let's see, I have a new one here that says landscape. You're allowed to talk.
Stone Ridge Court, which is just a block from this development. I think is terribly irresponsible to even consider this project without doing some kind of a disaster evacuation plan. I think it's absurd that nothing has been done in that vein when we all know that this is such a sensitive area for disaster evacuation. And I just wanna be on record as saying that I think it's too big for this area. I think there's gotta be a better use for that property. And I'm just against it. And that's all.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name in the beginning. Would you mind repeating it, please?
It's Larry Raymond.
Thank you. That's all we need. Thank you very much. All right, and anybody else new that hasn't spoken yet? Now then, we'll go to Dawn and Jenny Bassett. You're allowed to talk.
Hi, thank you. Jenny Bassett, 298 Ponnerosa Drive. My big concern is, like everyone else, the fire evacuation plan. Last summer, we had, it took us three hours to get from the tram to our home. There were altercations. It was ridiculous. And as Trent mentioned, it's not only the people in our area, but people that are traveling through our area and they get off the one exit and try to go through our neighborhood and get back on. Those, the people that are going through cause so much more traffic than just the residents. So I really feel that there needs to be a study that addresses that, not just our own area, but the through traffic, because that's what really causes problems. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And back to Jen Swickel, please.
Hi, so I'm Jen Swickel. I am at 40 Chaparral Circle.
I'm sorry, I just clicked the wrong thing. So please bear with me. There you go. You're allowed to talk.
Okay, so Jen Swickel, 40 Chaparral Circle. Not sure if I stated that last time. To reiterate what Ms. Bassett just said, any study that is on fire evacuation has to include the fact that I-70 gets closed at 114. So all major traffic coming from Denver gets stopped at 114. Any traffic coming down Valley from Aspen is also stopping, filling up the mall parking lot, filling up the roads with parking. So it's not just about how do we safely get all of the people out of our area. It's about how do we stop the traffic from coming in? And there's no way to do that when you don't know when a fire is gonna erupt. So that needs to be part of the study. And I'd just like to make a point from having been in construction my entire life. When you say 30 feet to midpoint of a roof line, that's gonna be 50-foot minimum. And when you say 53-foot to midline, that's 73-foot minimum to the peaks on those high-peak areas. So keep that in mind, because it's pretty misleading when you're saying 30 feet to the midline, because that's actually about where those flat portions of the roof are, where on Donigan. Thank you.
And thank you. All right, let's see. Michael Hobob again, please. You're allowed to talk. You're muted at this time? Michael, I cannot hear you. Okay, I cannot hear Michael, so we'll move on.
Hello?
Oh, there you are. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't press the right button. I wanted to thank Planning and Zoning for having this meeting and for letting us speak. And we hope we're able to speak at following meetings. I'll try to send an email. I'm not very good at that. Anyway, yeah, it's, we just feel like we don't get much of a say out here. Just things kinda get dumped on us. We got a lot of car lots and everything else. But anyway, this deal is just so overwhelming, it's so huge. It's just not fathomable how it could possibly work. It would, like I said before, it would be the, it would be the end of my happiness out here just because we are in such a special place and we're so fortunate. So I- Just because we are in such a special place and we're so fortunate. So I just don't see how developers can come in and want to bring forward such a development. It's just crazy. So again, thank you so much. And we appreciate all your hard work. Bye bye.
All right. Thank you very much. I see no more hands. So at this point for tonight, I will close the public portion. You anybody that missed this opportunity, you have another chance to get us some comments. We appreciate every comment that we hear. And I thank the public for their involvement. That said, bringing it back to the commission, this is where we actually stopped this hearing. And I hope the applicant did take notes. So you can do a rebuttal on all these comments next month. I want to bring it back to the commission to meditate a motion to continue Planning Item 9-20.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you. Second. At motion and a second. Okay, so since this is a continuation based on comments, I'm wondering if it would be helpful and if we would give the applicant some direction of what we would like to see.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pretty sure this is gonna be a long next meeting, if not even further. And I think at this point, due to out of respect for time and our next applicant, I think the I think the current applicant has heard plenty from questions to be addressed and from the public comment that I don't think we need much more direction than that. We can go on.
All right, fair enough. Very good point, Commissioner Schacter. Okay, if there's no discussion, I will call for the question.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Cipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wissing.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Thanks, Commission. Thanks to the applicant for coming forward tonight. We will see you again. I guess it's in April already, next month. Thank you very much. Let's see, we do have one more item on the agenda tonight. And I think everybody's ready. So Planning Item 64-20, which is consideration of a minor site architectural plan to add five new dwelling units. And I'm ready when you are.
Okay, that's that's me, Chairman Gretchen. Ben. This is Ben's application, so I think he's gonna need to jump off the Zoom at this point.
He gonna present it himself?
No, nope. Oh, sorry. I need you to promote Leah Mayer. She should be in the attendees list.
Hang on just a second here. Leah Mayer, there you go.
Thank you.
Panelist, and we're gonna recuse Commissioner West, right?
Correct.
Do I need to leave or can I just be recused?
Carl.
Actually, you need to leave, Ben. Underneath the conflict rules that we have in the code, there some of them are unonerous in the state, frankly. So I actually need you to step away. I'd kick you out of the room and out of the building if we were back at City Hall.
Okay.
Sounds good. Not even an attendee, completely gone.
Completely gone.
All right. See you, Ben. Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good night. Excellent. Thank you, Carl.
You know, it's used to be hard. You know, we had a former mayor who was an engineer and it was really tough because he had to like literally sit outside the building.
I get it. I understand. But we have Leah Mayer with us. But anyway, Gretchen first, right?
Yes, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, but like always, I do have a PowerPoint, so I'm gonna, oops, sorry. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay. The property, which is 405 Laurel Street, it currently consists of a home that was constructed in 1904, and it's shown there on the in on your screen. And it has actually been converted into three apartments. And there are also two freestanding dwellings. So there's five total units that are already on the property. As indicated in my staff report, the proposed development calls for the construction of a fourplex here along the south side of the property, and then also removal of a shed that's in the northwest corner of the property here. And then replacement with a small 6,000, I'm sorry, 675 square foot dwelling. And the property is located in the M1 mixed-use corridor zoning district, which is a commercial district where multifamily isn't allowed use. And because this is a commercial zoning district, there is not a minimum lot size per unit ratio as there is in our residential zoning districts. The development, though, does need to meet the landscaping, open space, off-street parking setback and other related requirements which limit lot coverage. So as a sidebar note, normally adding five residential units is an administrative review you can see here. However, the code does allow the director to refer this application to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which has obviously happened in this case. After reviewing the application, the commission, you all can actually make a final decision on this application, or you can actually you can refer it to the city council for its review. If the commission does approve this application before submitting a building permit application, the owner is required to submit what what we're calling as construction plans. As you recall, this is kind of an intermediate step that is intended to allow staff the opportunity to review the details of the project to ensure its compliance with code requirements, the conditions, any conditions that you add to the approval, and also, most importantly, the engineering standards. So about this project. At this point, I am not going to go through the areas where the project complies with the code. So those are all covered in my staff report. Rather, I'm going to focus on the few project details, which I believe require some further explanation. First is off-street parking. By code, this development, which includes the existing and the proposed units, so 10 units total, requires 17 off-street parking spaces. This is 1.5 spaces per unit plus one space per each five units, and those we refer to as the guest parking spaces. But the code also allows the director, the community development director, to consider certain parking alternatives, including the availability of on-street parking, proximity to transit, providing bike parking over the minimum, compact parking, tandem parking arrangements. The maximum allowed reduction, though, is 30% of what's required. So in this case, five parking spaces. The owner, back in December, requested the director to consider a three-space reduction in the off-street parking requirements. The director approved the request, recognizing the availability of on-street parking, proximity to transit, and the fact that they were providing more bike parking than the code required. Since this review, though, the owner slightly increased the size of the fourplex building. This two-story structure hat now has 11 tuck-under parking spaces, many of which are in a tandem configuration. With this arrangement, the development is deficient now by just one parking space. So the director approved the parking reduction, like I said, back in December, with the requirement that all of the tenant spaces be accommodated onsite. So it was the the at that time, the three spaces were the guest required guest parking spaces. The and those spaces would have been accommodated on street. And then also, there is a condition of approval that I have added to this report that prior to the certificate of occupancy, the owner will be required to provide a copy of the landlord-tenant agreement, which at minimum includes a prohibition of residents from having more than one vehicle per each of the one-bedroom units. And this is consistent with I think it was the Lofts developments. And then perhaps also Six Canyons. The photographs here on the right show you the parking situation along Laurel. It does allow on-street parking on both sides of the street. And then plus, I just wanted to mention that there are five pull-in spaces that are immediately adjacent to subway. I think it's five or six. And those, these are all public spaces. So regarding site and building design, as you know, the Development Code includes residential design standards, which governs site improvements and exterior building appearance. Regarding site design in multifamily developments, parking areas are required to be internalized within the site. They're supposed to be located away from street frontages. And those that are in view of the public street are required to be screened. In this case, you see there's five parking spaces that are uncovered. And they are visible from the the will be visible from Laurel. And so they've proposed some screening with evergreen shrubs, and I am recommending should you consider approving this development, that those get shoved over here. Because right now they're in the they're shown in the public right-of-way. And I recommend that they be relocated on the private property closer to the parking spaces that they're intended to screen. Additionally, the code requires that there be internal sidewalks connecting buildings, parking areas and open spaces, as well as sidewalks that provide a connection to the public sidewalk itself. Two things here. One is that there is not currently a public sidewalk along Laurel in this location. The Antlers Hotel to the north is in the process of constructing a public sidewalk. Due to the site constraints, city engineering approved a five-foot wide sidewalk with a three-foot wide planting strip between the sidewalk and the curb. Normally, we require a five-foot wide planting strip. So engineering has approved continuing that profile down to this proposed development. Next, the internal sidewalk. So my staff report, I'm recommending that they there is, sorry, there is a sidewalk here that connects the existing home, the 1904 dwelling, to the street, but it's a really it appears to be a really narrow sidewalk that doesn't meet the code width requirement. So I'm suggesting that they add a sidewalk that goes from the public street and connects the parking area, each of the each of the dwelling units. Now, there is an issue down in the southeast corner of the property where I am suggesting that they also connect from the public sidewalk into the development. And how that occurs, I I am seeking the you know, the opinions of the designers to help to help figure that out. So regarding the building design, multifamily developments are required to provide what's called a four-sided design that includes at least five design architectural design elements that are selected from a fairly lengthy list. In this case, I felt that the small detached unit in the northwest corner of the property met met the design standard. So I'm not going to talk about that here. Instead, just focus on this for the fourplex structure that you see here. The fourplex, in my determination, needed some elements on the east and the west elevation and also along the north elevation. The tuck-under garages here, they need to be separated from the main facade by at least a foot. So they need to be tucked back a little bit, or the building extended by a foot. That that shouldn't be difficult to accommodate. I think it was, I can't remember, I think it was the west elevation needed two additional elements and the east elevation needed one along the backside of the building, along the south side. The code requires that if it abuts a single, an existing single-family home, that the building have a height transition if that home is shorter than the building being proposed for construction. So they'll they'll need to work on some design elements on the the south side of the building there. Finally, the details of the civil plans, which include things like the paving of the parking area, curb gutter, construction, drainage and utility connections are required to comply with the engineering standards. And as I mentioned before, we're going to be reviewing that the details of the the engineering civil issues in the construction plans review stage of this process. So just about ready to wrap it up here. The site architectural review criteria are here on your screen. It's you need to find that the application is consistent with the general purpose and intent of the code, that it is consistent with the dimensional design development and other code standards. And regarding these two points, I said that it does meet the general purpose and intent of the code with certain modifications, as I have mentioned, or detailed in my staff report. The next criteria consideration is consistency with previously approved plat or PED. This is not applicable to this project. Finally, is conformance with the comprehensive plan. I found several points where this project is compatible with with several statements from the comprehensive plan. And those are shown here on your screen and also detailed in my staff report. Okay, so before I review the the action item, which is only one, I want to note that the city department representatives did review and comment on early iterations of this proposal. So if you are inclined to approve this project, the owner will submit a more detailed plan set. And those are going to get circulated to the reviewing departments for further review and comments. And like I said before, a few times, most specifically, compliance with the engineering standards. And then community development will also make sure that the the building design for the fourplex, some changes are made to comply with the letter of the residential design standards. So we also received a public comment about this project, and those were included in your packet. I want to note that we also received comment after the packet was published and they have, I think you have access, I added them to Civic Clerk. I think you were able to access them. I think it was just one comment that I received after the packet deadline. But those will be uploaded again, so everybody can see the comments. You know, after you continue this application. So this is the action item is consideration of the minor site architectural plan review for the addition of five units to this site. You can approve, deny, or continue. And I've recommended approval with findings and conditions that are listed on page nine and 10 of your staff report. And there they are. And I'm not going to go through them. However, as you all know, as is our policy while meeting remotely, to accommodate and allow receipt of public comment, you'll need to continue this item to the next meeting. And then here you have an option, actually. Because the annexation application is being continued to April 27, I'm asking you if you want to continue this to April 6. You all have a meeting set for April 6. Sorry, did I say 26? I meant Sorry, did I say twenty-six? I meant April sixth, sorry. And you can certainly add this to the, that agenda if you would like. So it's really up to you. So that's all I have, and I'm available to answer any questions you have. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
All right. Thank you very much, Gretchen, for all the information. Back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Waller, please.
Sorry about the ancient handway. I, I need some training. I need Mr. Wizard to help me. Yeah, so a couple of questions, so. Yeah, parking was one, and I think you kind of answered my parking question. I know that's a, that's a public comment, too. And that, one, one I had was, and I know on, on the design criteria, and you know, I, architects aren't, I'm not my favorite people. So I don't really want to go there. But, but is, is when I drove by the place today, I saw that the building, the nineteen oh-four building is this kind of white, cool building. And there's these big cottonwood trees or whatever out there. So as this goes in, when I look at the new building, you know, to tries to meet the five architectural things and four doodads, whatever, is, is it seems very different and not compatible with, with the rest of the site. I mean, it seems like you got, you know, two extremely different things. And, and I think I did something in the past, Gretchen, that you were part of. And we made, we made the new one match the old one. And, you know, it can't match it exactly, but colors and fenestrations and all that had to be similar. So is that, is, does that not matter, or is that a, is that a deal?
So you are referencing the Pink Palace, right? Yeah, yeah. And you were creating a carriage house behind. And at the time, and we still do, the code had very specific downtown design standards, which required the compatibility. This is outside the area that that is applicable, that the downtown, downtown standards are applicable to. And so since you went through that development, Pete, we've updated the code and integrated some additional requirements. And so I'm a long-winded way of saying that, that there is not a requirement to have the two buildings, we'll call it coordinate style. So a- as it would be if this were located in the, the downtown. Now it's M-two zoning district.
So it's just eclectic, whatever, okay. The, the next thing is, is, and I don't think there's any open space kind of thing in here, right? Is it, does it just?
They are required, well, they're required to provide a certain amount of landscaping. And in my staff report, I indicated that the front yard in, in front of the nineteen oh-four building, and then wrapping around the, the north side of it, they're, they're more than in compliance with the open space and landscaping requirement by code.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? From the commission? Um, let's see, your hand went up. Commissioner Zipperly, please.
I'd just like Gretchen to confirm that due to the recent changes that we're not actually seeing on the drawings, all but one required parking spot are provided onsite?
That is correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. If I see no more questions, I'll let the applicant speak. Oh, Commissioner Shacter, please.
Of course. Gretchen, Gretchen, just understanding, we are, we're not requiring any Laurel Street sidewalk in this case, just internal walkways, is that correct?
No, no. The, there will be, there is a requirement to extend the Laurel Street side sidewalk. Yeah.
For the full.
For the full length, yeah, that's correct. And it would be five feet wide with that three-foot-wide planting strip.
Thank you. And then the other, the only other question regarding your, regarding the requirement for landscape screening, there's no, one, once screening is in, and we're talking about natural screening, not fencing, there's no recourse if that screening dies or isn't maintained, is there?
Um, there, you know, that's always a, a touchy, not a touchy, that's not the right word, but that, that is a dicey subject. The answer is yes, because they, they would be out of compliance with their development agreement that requires the, the screening to be in place. The, I, I can be totally honest with you, our enforceability of that, of the landscaping requirements, we, we would have to revisit these sites like every year to make sure people were in compliance with that. And we, we have not done that.
And Ezra, you recommend landscaping versus fencing of some decorative and screening?
Well, they, they could do, they could do a short screening fence, say a four-foot-high fence with some landscaping at the bottom of it, or a short retaining wall. It, it, the, the code allows them a, an option.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none. We'll let the applicant come forward and present their item. Leah?
Hi, thank you. This is Leah Mayer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I just wanted to touch on Pete's comment about the architectural styles. And although the styles are fairly different, we were planning to coordinate the colors of the new buildings with the colors of the existing buildings there. And then I just wanted to also point out that we are keeping those two very large, mature trees that are in front of that home and, and sort of adjacent to it. And that's actually why we had put that landscape screening off the site and sort of into the, the, I guess it's a right-of-way area. And that was because we didn't want to put it too close to the canopy of the existing trees. That was just our thought process. We can, we can work on moving it onto the site. Yeah, that's all I wanted to think. And thanks for being here tonight, this late.
Likewise. Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions to the applicant? Any more questions? Now we'll see none. Thank you. Let's open the public comment portion of the hearing. And please raise your hand, so I kind of have an idea who wants to speak. How many hands I see? At this point, I see one. A phone number ending in sixty-eight fifty-one. You're allowed to talk. Please say your name and, your name for the record, please.
Hi, this is Linda Holloway again. I disagree with Gretchen, unfortunately. The intent and purpose of the statute is not met. Let me start. I'll talk really fast. I hope you can listen really fast. First of all, who will enforce the tandem parking? I live across from a tandem parking area, and I can tell you that maybe one time in five years, it has been used tandem parking. Otherwise, whether it's a couple or a single person with two or more vehicles, one vehicle is parked in the off-street parking area, and the other vehicle or vehicles are parked on the street. Second, the applicant's civil engineering firm used a nineteen ninety-seven sixth edition of the Institution of Transportation Engineers for trip planning, or that's not the right term, I apologize. But the number of trips every day, I can't find my note on that. And they came up with twenty-seven vehicles would be making a trip morning and, you know, during high times. Contrarily, the city requires fifteen off-street parking places and two guest parking places. Well, the twenty-seven vehicles that the Institute of Transportation Engineers is obviously different than the fifteen, twenty-seven to fifteen, that's quite a difference in magnitude. There actually is a tenth edition from that institution of transportation engineers that was published in twenty-twenty. I don't know if that got questions out to CDOT as well as the institution, but I haven't gotten a call back to figure that out. But twenty-seven and fifteen parking vehicles that are expected to be in that parking place, to be associated with that development, that's quite a difference. This means twelve additional vehicles in the neighborhood's on-street parking area. And plus, the unutilized tandem spaces, as I already said. Interesting looking at how to deal with, if you're a tandem parking person, how to deal with it. And that meant every day going back and forth with the tandem parking. It just becomes impossible. The purpose and intent of the city code has also been broken on my document. The attachment A seven, you will see code number three, oh-seven-oh, oh-one-oh, oh-three-oh, regulating the development and use of land based upon the impact of such, such development or use on surrounding areas of the city. The city's intent and purpose expression code is not met. The on-street parking caused by this development would, will have a serious impact on North Glenwood. Also, the city code on A nine, the attachment A nine, when considering the use of on-street parking, the director shall considering, consider existing on-street parking demands in the vicinity of the proposed development. Vicinity, I also gave you three different, different dictionary definitions, all of which mean neighborhood. So over the last several weeks, a really weird thing has happened. I don't know how they did it, but all of a sudden, whether the normal crowding on Laurel Street is gone. Normally, there are many cars parked all day on Laurel Street and all night. They have vanished, poof! They're basically devoid of car, Laurel Street is basically devoid of, devoid of the normal on-street parking that is consistently there and has been forever. The applicant also said in a letter, which is my attachment A fourteen, that he has done everything he can to include all parking reductions possible. I provided a partial solution for adherence to the code purpose and intent and the impact on the neighborhood in my letter with attachments. I hope that this goes to city council. It's not appropriate, the off-street parking law, appropriate for code is not appropriate for the intent and purpose described by code. I thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for your comments, and that's where we're going to leave it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else from the public? I'll see none. I'll close the public portion, and again, well, if we go to the sixth of April, then the comments have to come in quicker, right, Gretchen?
Yes, but I'm able to consolidate them even up to, say, noon, the day of the meeting.
The meeting, okay. You, you have an option to send them, the public has send, has an option to send it in via email, drop-off, and the utility box, utility payment box, or at City Hall, mail it to City Hall. So with that said, I'm entertaining a motion to continue this item. Planning item sixty-four dash twenty.
And Marco, are we continuing to April sixth? Is that your preference?
Um, let's see, but could I get a nod or a, okay, it looks like, yes. Okay, then I would like to see the continuance to April sixth, yes.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? I see none. We'll call for the question to continue to April sixth.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Waller?
Yes.
Commissioner Zipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dem?
Yes.
Commissioner Shacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissing?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Thank you, Jen. Thanks, commissioners. Thank you, Leah. We'll see you, or we'll hear from you again on the sixth.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Um, let's see, where are we? Fifteen minutes to go. Uh, commissioner comments, Commissioner Shaver?
Uh, thanks to Sumner and the staff for their town hall meeting. It was very informative. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Waller?
Uh, none.
Thank you. Commissioner Wissing? Thumbs up, excellent. Commissioner Zipperly?
Nothing here, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shacter?
Uh, nothing, other than I think Gretchen knows April sixth, I will probably not have phone nor computer service. So likely to excuse myself, but.
Good for you.
Thanks for the reminder. I forgot.
Thanks, Sumner. I got nothing. Good meeting. Thanks, everybody. Uh, Jen?
Nothing for me. Thank you for the long night. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you. And Carl, chomping at the bit?
No, nothing. I could, I could, I do have a two-hour PowerPoint that I could start.
Start, just clicked like really fast, just. Okay. Excellent. Well, thanks, everybody, and we'll see you in the sixth. Good night.